All right, all the way down at the end, we have Town Administrator Steve Kulos, and then Assistant Town Administrator Joseph Pesimato, and then we have the Select Board, we have Member Karen Anger, Financial Officer Peter Clay, Clerk Deidre Parati, Vice Chair Gary Cheeseman, and Chair Ben Timman. Now, could I ask all residents that are able and willing to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? That one's higher. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And while I'm really happy to see we've got families here with kids, that's great, that's perfectly welcome, just try to keep the kids' volume to an indoor level tonight, if we can, I appreciate that, thank you. I know how tough that can be, I have an 11-year-old and a 9-year-old myself. For those of you who are attending town meeting for the first time, town meeting is the town's legislative session, and you, the voters, are its legislators. I thank you for taking time to participate in this important part of the democratic process. Our town bylaws require that we have a quorum of 120 registered voters. I have been advised by the town clerk that quorum has been met, so I call this continued session a special town meeting to order. Before we proceed, I want to pause here to take a moment and explain why we are having a continued session tonight, particularly for anyone who was not yet in the meeting hall when we adjourned on Monday night after voting on Articles 1 through 4 as a consent calendar. While I appreciate that the adjournment was frustrating, ultimately, I saw no other way of proceeding given the requirements of the Mass. General Laws concerning town meeting, the historic number of voters that turned out, more than any other town meeting on record, and well in excess of what we had at the annual town meeting in April, which itself may have been a record turnout, and the capacities of the three rooms at Bukeur that were equipped for town meeting purposes. Specifically, Section 10 of Chapter 39 of the General Laws provides that whenever the moderator determines that voters are being excluded from the town meeting because there is no room for them in the places provided, or that the voters in attendance are being deprived of the opportunity to participate therein for any reason whatsoever, he shall either, on his own motion, recess the meeting for any period during the day of the meeting, or, after consultation with members of the Select Board then present, adjourn the same to another date not later than 14 days following the date of said meeting, when places and facilities sufficient to accommodate all voters attending and to enable them to participate therein shall be available. At the time of the adjournment, we had approximately 680 voters already checked in. As I said, that was a record. We have never, we had never eclipsed 500 before April's annual town meeting. We had approximately 40 non-voters in the building, approximately 50 more voters in the entryway still being checked in, and a line that wrapped all the way around the Bukeur Administration Building toward the parking lot near the playground. I observed that line myself and understood there to be at least 200 to 300 people still looking to get into town meeting. Although the fire chief advised me that the three rooms could hold up to 1,000 people if all chairs were removed, I made the determination that removing all the chairs and having people stand for what was likely to be a multi-hour meeting would deprive voters the opportunity to participate, and I stand by that determination. There was no guarantee that removing the seats and only using standing-room capacity would allow every voter in line to have room to enter. Section 10 also provides that the town meeting may be held in one or more places, provided that if it is held in more than one place, the places are connected by a means, the public address system and loudspeakers, so that the proceedings in all such places may be heard and participated in by all the voters present. Although opening more classrooms was considered during my consultation with the Select Board, those rooms lacked the equipment that would need to be used in the additional rooms, of which there would have had to have been several, given the limited capacity of those rooms on the fly, so that was not a viable option either. Given all this, I made the decision to adjourn the meeting to the time and place that the Select Board had previously selected as a backup, as noted on the front of the warrant. So I trust that clarifies the situation and makes clear that the decision was made to ensure compliance with the General Laws, including the requirement to make sure that no voter who is in attendance is denied the opportunity to participate in town meeting. With that, let's proceed. Tonight, we will be using electronic voting as our primary means of voting. We will resort to the voting cards in the event of a technical issue. Each voter receives both a clicker and a voting card at check-in. And if you are a registered voter but did not check in and obtain a clicker and a voting card, please see the election officers back in the entry room. If you don't have a clicker and a voting card, you will not be able to vote. You must be here in the gym in order for your vote to be counted, that's where the transmitters are located, and that's where, if we resort to the voting cards, that's my line of sight, is within the gym. When putting a motion to a vote using the clickers, I will announce that the voting is open. Anyone in favor of the motion, then pending, should press 1, the green button, on their clicker. Anyone opposed should press 2, the red button. Anyone who wants to abstain, that is, not vote on that motion, should not press any buttons, we will not be using the yellow number 3 button tonight. After a brief period, I will announce that voting is closing. Although you can change your vote while voting is open, only your last vote selection at the time of the closing will be counted. I will then declare the vote. The clickers have not been registered to individual voters, so names will appear on, no names will appear on screen, I made that same thing on Monday night, I've got it right here, no names will appear on screen, and no record of each voter's vote will be maintained. That said, each voter is entitled to only one vote and should not use another voter's clicker to place an additional vote. And I will pause at this point as well to note that I believe a dozen or so clickers were not returned on Monday night, so if you accidentally took a clicker home and you realize that, bring it back to town hall, to the clerk's office, we just want to make sure we get all the clickers back, thank you. Now, to ensure that the clickers that we're using tonight are functioning properly, we will now run a test vote. I'm not going to put the grid up on the screen because we would be seeing seven or eight screens, it's kind of tough. What I will do is I'm going to have the clerk confirm the number of checked-in voters at this time, and we will see, you know, everyone pressing your buttons will make sure that the number is pretty much in line, so.
Five.
All right, we have 560 voters currently checked in.
104.
Yep. All right. All right. So, when I put up the test question, again, green for yes, red for no, look in the window for the 1 or the 2, that'll correspond to what button you pressed, and then the little "OK" as well will show up. The first time around, there may be a little bit lag because we're using two transmitters, so press that button a second time, even a third, to get that signal going. Once the system is running, it usually goes a little bit faster. So, if you believe that there's a problem with your clicker, please notify one of the, we're not using assistant moderators tonight, but the election officials. If there are any technical problems that we can't resolve, we will then go to the voting cards, and I'll explain the process for doing so at that time. So, here is the test question. Let's get, switch it over to the test question. All right, this is for the theater lovers out there. Have or will you see Waitress at the North Shore Music Theater? 1 for yes, 2 for no. Go ahead, and voting is now open. And again, if you're not seeing the "OK" or the number, just press that button a second time, maybe even a third. Everyone give their clicker one more press, see if we can get that number close to the 560 that have checked in, we're getting there.
530.
Oh, 530? Oh, okay, 530. Well then, we are quite close, I'm assuming that maybe a couple of people aren't voting on this question, maybe they're not theater lovers. If you are having a problem with your clicker, go to the check-in station, they can change it over to another clicker, but it seems like the system is running and almost everyone's clicker is working, so let's go ahead and see what the results are. So I went to the show on Saturday night, it's really good, it's, there's a couple more nights, I think the run goes through Sunday, the music was done by Sara Bareilles. Support the local theater, that's all I can say. All right, so it appears that the clickers are functioning, and we will proceed with them at this time. All right. So, as noted in the warrant book, the conduct of our meeting is governed by the rules of town meeting time, a special set of parliamentary procedures developed by the Massachusetts Moderators Association for New England Town Meetings. Here it is. My responsibilities as your town moderator include presiding over and regulating proceedings, deciding questions of order, declaring votes, and granting leave to address this meeting. We will use the same meeting at tonight's town, same rules at tonight's town meeting that we use at every town meeting, and those rules were adopted on Monday evening by unanimous consent. To ensure that we have an orderly meeting and that people who want to speak are able to do so, permission of the moderator is required to address the meeting. If you wish to speak on a motion, please come to one of the microphones and wait to be recognized. Tonight, we have the two center microphones, we also have microphones on the side aisles for anyone who's sitting in the bleachers, and we also have two handhelds, if you're sitting somewhere that you're not able to get to one of the standing microphones, raise your hand and we will have one of the election officials bring you one of the handheld microphones, particularly if it's difficult for you to get up and down the bleacher stairs. If you wish to speak on a motion, please come to one of those microphones and wait to be recognized. When you ask to be recognized, please state your name and street address. As a reminder, there will be a three-minute speaking maximum per voter per motion during debate. After three minutes have passed, I will hold up my hand to let you know that time's up, and I'll say that your time is up. Please wrap up your remarks when you see me put up my hand. If you continue speaking, other than to wrap up, my obligation to maintain a fair and efficient meeting require that I move on to the next speaker. A voter wishing to speak more than once on a motion can request the moderator put a motion to the meeting to allow that, but the moderator will not recognize the request to speak a third time on a motion. Please remember that we are in a legislative session for the town of Wenham. We are here tonight with our friends and neighbors, we are a community, I ask everyone to keep that concept in mind. While spirited debate is always welcome, being cordial and respectful is a priority for the efficiency of the meeting. Every person who rises to debate a motion has an equal right to be heard. We want people to feel comfortable participating in the meeting, sharing opinions, and asking questions. As such, at this meeting, like all town meetings, we expect people to refrain from making remarks of a personal nature, whether directed at an elected or appointed official, town or school, district staff, or any of your fellow registered voters. Again, to ensure that the meeting is run efficiently, any comments or questions must be directed to the moderator rather than to the boards, committee members, other registered voters, or prior speakers. Town meeting is not a forum for cross-examination of presenters or other speakers. If necessary, should a question arise, and if I deem it appropriate, I may ask a specific town official to address the question as best can be done. Applauding, cheering, or for that matter booing a speaker's remarks disrupts and delays the meeting. Disorderly conduct is grounds for removal from the meeting after a warning, but I trust that won't be necessary tonight. Each article advises the meeting and the topic to be addressed. Articles, however, merely stick out the limits of the area within which the meeting may act. Someone needs to make a motion for such action to occur. So, for each article, starting with Article 5, where we adjourned on Monday night, I will see if the board, committee, or individual advancing the article in question wishes to make a motion. If a motion is made and receives a second, we will then take up any questions, comments, or proposed amendments to the motion, and ultimately vote on the motion. If no motion is made, or doesn't receive a second, we move on to the next article. With that, let's turn to Article 5 and proceed. And again, I'm just going to ask, it's, it's great to have kids here, even if you're behind the bleachers, just ask, sound really travels around this gym quite easily, if we could just try to keep the volume of the kids and adults, I'm not going to pick out one group or the other, to an indoor level, that would be appreciated. All right. Article 5 is an article to accept Spring Hill subdivision way as public way. I recognize Ann Weeks of the planning board to make the main motion under Article 5.
I move the approval of Article 5 as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second? The motion has been made and seconded. The warrant reflects that the Select Board's recommendation on the article is to be made at town meeting. What is the Select Board's recommendation?
The Select Board unanimously recommends approval of Article 5.
Bob, can we get that microphone a little bit louder? Ben, can you give that another go?
Sure. The Select Board unanimously recommends approval of Article 5.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion?
White cell working. Hello, Natalie Bauer, 16 Porter Street. Two questions. First, what will this cost the town? And secondly, what was the original agreement with the developer before it was a public, proposed as a public right-of-way? Thank you.
Ann, would you like to handle that, or would you like the administration to answer the question in the first instance?
Go ahead. When the subdivision was originally proposed and evaluated and voted on, the expectation was that this would be a public way, it was built to public way standards, we're in a sit, we were in a situation where the developer walked away from the project and didn't finish seeking approval of the streets. And the homeowners association came in and took over the process and finished it. So, that's, that's the process, that's how we got here. It's not that this was ever supposed to be a private street in perpetuity, it was, this is the way subdivisions work in this town. You can decide at the point at which you come in for your permit that you want a public street, and if you meet the standards, then the town has to vote at meeting to approve it. I'm not going to answer the question about how much it will cost the town, because it's not in our jurisdiction, but I can turn it over to the finance board or the, back to the moderator actually, and see who can answer that for you.
Thank you, Ann. Steve, do you want to handle her? Steve, go ahead, I recognize the town administrator.
As far as exact cost, we don't have, but it would be in line with maintaining any other public road in the town, and in addition, we expect to be able to absorb the labor costs and the existing staffing that the town has.
Thank you. Any further comment on the motion under Article 5? Any further comment? I'm going to ask twice tonight because we're using twice as many microphones. Seeing no one else approach any of the microphones, and seeing no hands raised on the bleachers for the remote mics, we will now vote on the main motion under Article 5. A yes vote means that the town accepts Spring Hill Farm Road and Angus Circle as public ways and authorizes the Select Board to take the steps necessary to acquire the legal rights to those ways. A no vote means no change. This motion requires a simple majority. And again, if you're not seeing the "OK," just give the button a second push, green for yes, red for no. We'll give it 15 more seconds. Voting will close in 10 seconds. And voting is now closed. The motion passes 409 yays to 123 nays. Article 6, a new Cutler Elementary School at 237 Asbury Street, Hamilton, Massachusetts. Before we get started, I'd like to remind town meeting that at the annual town election in April, the debt exclusion for this proposed borrowing was approved by ballot question. Now, the superintendent of schools has requested to make a presentation on this article. I will recognize Mr. Tracy at this time to make his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to present the Hamilton-Wenham Elementary School project one more time. Next slide, please. And go one more, please. So, the school building committee explored three design categories, renovation, renovation addition, and new construction. Using the four design categories that were offered by the MSBA, the architectural team developed 14 design options that encompassed elements from each of the categories. After careful consideration, the school building committee voted to support a consolidated building on the current Cutler school site that would house all of our elementary students in the district in grades 1 through 5, and allow us to move our preschool and kindergarten students all to the Bukeur school. Next slide. Consolidation option was chosen for several reasons, including its economic and financially prudent nature. As we have stated all along, space at the elementary schools has become an issue. All students need to have access to adequate learning spaces regardless of the program they attend in our district. There is also an opportunity to take advantage of the spaces and learning neighborhoods that will allow students and staff of one grade to be together to plan, grow, and learn, something we cannot do in three different buildings. Most importantly, the consolidated building addresses security issues that are difficult to overcome in our current elementary school buildings. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. One more. The total cost of the Hamilton-Wenham Elementary School for our grades 1 through 5 in the whole district is 140, approximately 142 million. The MSBA has agreed to grant the district just under $50 million to offset the cost of the building. The balance would be split between the two towns, as you see here, in the same way that we divide the annual school assessment, based on an average of three years' student enrollment, resulting in a cost to Hamilton of approximately $60 million, and a cost to Wenham of approximately Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tracy. I also understand that the FinCom, as the body charged with advising town meeting on matters of financial impact, wishes to make a presentation on this article, so I'll recognize Jared Ward at this time to make that presentation.
Thank you, I'll be brief. At town meeting on April 5th, the finance committee endorsed the proposed Cutler school project and issued a lengthy report supporting the endorsement. Our opinion remains unchanged. The proposed Cutler project represents the best financial option for the future elementary schools, and the report's findings summarized in the table that you see there speak for themselves. Subsequent to town meeting, the FinCom discussed the potential for current federal trade policy to create possible project cost overruns during construction. We view this overrun risk to be minimal for the following reasons. There will be a prevailing wage project labor agreement in place on day one, which will cover labor costs for the project, which we understand are approximately 67% of total project costs. While this makes the project labor costs expensive, it also makes the costs highly The currently soft commercial construction market also somewhat guarantees the availability of union labor at the prevailing wage floors. The project will be fully bonded with a GMP contract, therefore, the GC will have to absorb any tariff cost increases, not the school committee, once the project is commenced. When and if the project is approved by the towns, the general contractor, not the towns, will then make any necessary adjustments to their contingency reserves for materials prior to signing the GMP contract. Bottom line, the GC won't sign the deal and commence construction unless they know they can build the school for the guaranteed maximum price budget. That would be bad, but at least the town would know this before putting a shovel in the ground.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. I further recognize you to make the main motion under Article 6.
I move to approve the $142,266, whoop, sorry. Pardon?
Whatever.
Is it the? I'm sorry, point of order, am I recommending the borrowing?
Okay, you're reading the motion.
I move to approve the $142,266,034 borrowing authorized by the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School District for the construction of a new Cutler Elementary School, all is set forth on the screen.
Thank you, is there a second? The motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Ward, I also understand the finance committee would like to update town meeting on the committee's recommendation on this matter, is that correct?
I'm sorry, brain cramp, did I not already just do that?
You delivered a further presentation about, I believe you wanted to update the formal recommendation that's reflected on the screens.
Yes, I, I move to update the formal recommendation as presented on the screen.
And what is the updated recommendation?
Do I have to read that?
No. So the warrant, apologies for any confusion, the warrant book reflected that the finance committee was recommending favorable action by a 4 to 1 vote. I understand that the committee has since revoted and has a new recommendation. Is that the case?
Yes, the committee moves to recommend the favorable action on the motion.
And is it still a 4 to 1 vote, or is it a different?
Vote. 0, 0. 3 was 4, 0. 4, 0. It went revoting on. That's correct, it was a 4, 0 vote.
Okay, thank you. And that was made, and that was done at the warrant hearing, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes, okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. All right, I also understand that the Select Board would like to update town meeting on its recommendation, is that correct, Mr. Timman?
Yes, it is. And the Select Board, as we did on the spring, voted unanimously to recommend passage of this article.
Thank you. Before I ask whether there is any discussion on the motion, and given that I suspect that there will be, I want to pause briefly, just as I did when this article came, or a similar article, came before the annual town meeting. I understand that this is a contentious issue, all sides of which likely want to be heard. Again, we act tonight as a community, and I ask you to keep that in mind. Regardless of whether you stand in support of the project or against it, remember that we are all neighbors here, and presumably, everyone believes they are acting in the town's best interest. So please be respectful of everyone's opinion, and again, refrain from cheering, booing, and the like. Ultimately, your vote will be your voice. Understand that your vote is either yes, to approve the borrowing authorized by the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School District Committee, or no, to disapprove the borrowing, and not to amend the article to propose other ideas or options for funding or construction of new schools. With that, let's move on to discussion of the motion.
Thanks, Roger. Hi, everybody. Is the volume okay?
Yep, name and address, this is.
Of course. My name is Alex Overton, I am at 167 Mann Street. This process has been really hard. I want to commend everybody for being here tonight, it's nice to see you all again for the second time this week, and thank you especially to everybody at the front of this room for getting us as far as we are into the process, I know that was a ton of work. This is not the first tough decision that we've made as a town, and it certainly won't be the last. I will say, if you look on Facebook, everybody thinks everybody hates each other, we're saying the same thing over and over again, but I will say, in real life, or IRL, as my kids would say, all of my conversations have been civil, and kind, and passionate, and clearly, as Roger said, it's a community who just wants the best for all of us, so thank you for that. Tonight, I am going to cast my third vote in favor of the school consolidation. I'm doing it for three main reasons, all of which we've gone over already, but just want to summarize. The first is that I believe in democracy, and I've elected these officials before us, the Select Board, the Finance Committee, the School Committee. The Select Board, the Finance Committee, the School Committee, all approved this project, and I trust the process that they've gone through for years, long before we all decided to yell at each other on Facebook. So, I trust all of you, and the work that Superintendent Tracy has done. That's the first reason. The second is that I believe it's the greatest good for the greatest many. It's not going to be perfect. It's not going to solve everything. There's going to be some unforeseen things, and as a community, we'll figure it out together. But I believe it is the best chance at an equal education for all of our youngest learners. Third, and finally, it's the most physically responsible decision. Full stop. So, for those three reasons, I will be voting yes for the third time tonight. I hope you all join me. Thank you very much.
We'll go over to the microphone on my left next.
Hello?
Just, again, name and address.
Katie Brochi. I'm on 90 Cedar Street. Today, I'm also a proud supporter of the school consolidation project. I didn't grow up here. I grew up in Central Mass, in what I also thought was a small town. But my class size was 150 for one town, and then we had a regional high school of 350. My elementary school of 150 per class had grades two to five, and I honestly felt like it was small. I knew everybody, knew all the people, knew all the teachers. So, to me, this argument that creating a larger school is going to make it feel too big, it just doesn't make sense to me. I also felt like my school system had more activities, sports, opportunities for students because of the bigger size. It was also a top-rated school, actually higher than this district. So, the argument that small schools is the key for the best in class learning just doesn't equate to me. There's just so many factors that go into it: student-to-teacher ratio, teacher quality, administration, equitable learning. So, to pinpoint it just on one factor just doesn't seem right. Friends here that grew up have explained that these types and initiatives in Hamilton and Wenham have always been tricky and always met with a loud opposing voice. True to form, I've seen all the misinformation arguing, fear-mongering on Facebook for months now. My personal fear is not about the size of the school, but if we don't pass this, what happens next? Will anything ever get done? And make no mistakes, there'll be many iterations and debates that go on in the future. Every renovation, addition, or rebuild will add more time. It'll be tricky to get more money for another feasibility study. Again, this project was found by the experts that this is the best option. So, I question how long it will take to do the next step, and by that time, thousands of kids, including my own, who are four and two, will have lost that opportunity to benefit from a school that meets their needs today. That's why I stand up today to act now for a better opportunity for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, no one at that microphone, so we'll go back to the center. Go ahead, sir.
Francis Carr, 5 Meridian Road. Good evening. As much as I enjoy going to town meeting, I think this issue has been litigated and discussed in other forums. Tonight's vote is rendered largely symbolic by Hamilton's vote. You can vote no, you can vote yes. We will all pay the same price either way. Sometimes, sometimes that symbolism is important. I feel this vote is a referendum on how we choose to govern ourselves tonight. I get these flyers in the mail: blinding, misleading, anonymous. You know who's not anonymous? Our Select Board. I know these people. They support this plan. Our School Board. I know these people. They support this plan. The School Building Committee, more than ten years invested across the community to develop this. The FinCom supports this plan. We've paid independent consultants to look at dozens of options. They support this plan. The MSBA, who has built school after school after school in this century, not the late 1900s, supports this $50 million. So, at some point, the moderator will say, "Time is almost up." Will we be ruled by anonymous rumor? I urge us to vote yes tonight as a symbolic way to show good governance with transparency and honesty and service as honorable folk used to have.
Thank you. We're going to go back to the microphone on my left, and then we'll come back to the center. Go ahead, Mr. Sprague.
Sure. Finn Sprague, 55 Arbor Street. I'm the chair of the Wenham FinCom, but I'm here speaking as a regular citizen. I would like to ask the residents here to do two things. Please vote to approve the motion to authorize the consolidated elementary school. Second, I would like you to please express your opinion to the Select Board here and to town leadership as to what you would like to have happen, given that Hamilton has not approved the new school. As you know, the FinCom estimated the financial impact of not passing the school. It means that next April, we can expect to be asked to fund an HVAC improvement at the crumbling Winthrop and Cutler schools to the tune of $15 million. For the next decade, it will be one multi-million dollar repair after another, and these repairs are not part of the $90 million plus that it would cost to fully bring these two schools to code and ADA compliance. Refusing any major investment in Cutler or Winthrop is our second-best option financially. That means doing nothing more than HVAC to these schools for ten years. It means no improvement to the learning environment for these kids for ten years. Remember, if we try to touch these buildings to improve them in any way, it means everything has to be brought to code. That means if you try to fix the layout, add security, or alter the classrooms, or do much of anything, you trigger $45 million of required compliance in each school. So, my question to you citizens is, what do you want to do for the next ten years? On one hand, I want to stand with the 58% of Hamilton voters that voted with Wenham to approve this school. I don't want to indifferently vote against every request for the next ten years. On the other hand, the school agreement is open for negotiation now, and we could be asking the Select Board to protect our citizens financially and our students for their safety. We could be asking that one-third of every elementary school capital dollar has to be invested in Bucker. Or we could insist that Wenham kids are all sent to Bucker, and since Hamilton wants to have two neighborhood schools, they can pay for it themselves. Please stand up here at this meeting and tell the town what you want. Stand up, speak up. Send a letter tomorrow if you're not comfortable, and please vote for the consolidated school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sprague. No one's at that... In the center, go ahead.
Nancy Flynn, Tussias Lane. I'm urging everyone here to vote no for this mega-school, and I have a number of points I want to make. Number one, I used to teach at the elementary schools, starting in 1989, and when I was a new teacher, teaching kindergarten special needs in grade two, there were overrides at the time of needing a new roof. We have buckets, we have water coming in. I was teaching special needs kids on a stage, sometimes in different rooms, different closets. Let me just remind everybody, when I was teaching, we were number, I don't know, eight in the state, okay? How many years ago was that? And I'm teaching on the stage, teaching in classrooms, teaching in tiny closets, and the reality is, we were academically strong, and we were a great school system. Why are we number fifty-something now? And yet, we need all this money, and that's going to make a new school, and then we're going to... Our school rating's going to go up? I don't think so. I'd like to know where all the money has gone all these years? Why these drips are still coming in? Number two, private conversation with Finance Committee member of Hamilton, John McGrath, told me specifically in the parking lot that this was going to outtax many people here, many young people. You have no idea the amount of money that is going to be needed. Number three, it's my understanding that the town of Manchester agreed to pass the zoning, okay, the 3A zoning, they agreed to pass it because there was money coming from the state that was going to repair the retaining wall. Guess what? The state just came back and said, "Oops, we don't have enough money to give you. We made a mistake. Oopsie." Do you really think our bankrupt state has the money to give us all this? I'm not buying it right now, because $4 billion right now is housing immigrants, right? That's where our money is going right now. And lastly, my gosh, look at this room. How many people of senior age, how many people are going to lose their home? They are on a fixed income. This is not small dollars. My husband and I, what do we pay? $50,000 a year? $50,000 a year in property taxes? We don't have kids. We don't even get a road crowd. How can you vote for something like this?
Ms. Flynn, your time is up. Thank you. All right. Again, please, no clapping or booing. Your voice will be through your vote. We're going to go over to my right to the microphone in this aisle.
Kristen Locuson, 8 Fund Court. I move to vote.
All right, first of all, no calling out. All right, thank you for the second. Got one person. So, I see one more person at the microphone. I'm going to rule the motion to call the question not yet in order. We'll hear from the speaker in the center. It seems like there's not a long queue, so let's give the speaker in the center her three minutes, and then it seems like we'll be done and we'll be moving to vote at that point anyway. Maybe Mr. Purdy has put a second person in line, but I still think, we've only been debating this for fifteen minutes, I'm not going to rule the motion to call the question in order yet. Just one second. I will commend you. Proper way to make the motion to call the question. You just come up and you say it. You can't speak before it, so kudos to you on that. Go ahead, here in the center.
Natalie Bowers, 16 Porter Street. I'm so sorry to Ms. Flynn, she has a lot of fears about...
I'll just... Let's not refer to primary speaker by name. You can sit the previous speaker, so on. Let's just refer...
There's a lot of fears around this issue, but they are non-secutors. There is nothing to do with rankings in this. There is nothing to do about immigrants in this. This is simply a school consolidation project that has to do with the state of our school buildings. I care deeply about our schools, and I care deeply about our taxes. Our senior citizens will be hit harder with taxes if we do not say yes today. Our Select Board, School Committee, and Finance Committee, whom we elected, have spent more than a decade. You've heard all of this before. If we vote this down, we lose access to nearly a third of the funding from the state, and we are guaranteed higher taxes to come up with an alternative. I do trust the experts, like someone else mentioned, and I am grateful for that. I believe in equity, and right now, kids in Bucker are learning in a building that's safe and accessible. The kids and teachers in Hamilton, not so much. We've all seen photos of the classrooms and the closets. This is not a school, it's a gamble on our children. If we don't vote to support this, I honestly think we need to rename our town, because we won't be Wenham anymore, we're going to be Loseham. We're going to be losing teachers, we're going to be losing prime value in our homes due to the fact that our housing demand is predicated on the quality of our schools and our active visible investment in them, and we will lose existing residents along with the chance to keep our taxes relatively lower in the long run. We will lose a lot. Please vote yes today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. First. And again, just for the folks who are behind the bleachers, if you could try to keep the volume down, it's making it a little bit difficult for people to hear, I think. We'll go... I'm going to go to Mr. Purdy first, and then I will go to my microphone on my left and then on my right. So, go ahead, Mr. Purdy. Still, name and address.
James Purdy, Larch Row in town. My... I support this on a yes vote, but that's not the question that I have. I have supported this publicly in a number of arenas, actually. But my question is, could we clarify formally? The gentleman spoke earlier about the fact that because Hamilton didn't reach its two-thirds, what are the implications going forward for the town of Wenham? And are there any other options available? Or is the fact likely do with the budget process? If one town does not support the budget, the school budget I'm talking about now, then it has to go and have a further discussion. What is the process going forward if there is any alternatives? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Purdy. Town Council, I think, might be the best person to answer that question, so I'll recognize Lauren Goldberg.
Mr. Moderator.
We got Bob? Thanks. Sorry about that, folks.
That was scary. Mr. Moderator. 3 a.m. So, both towns need to approve this borrowing in order for it to be acted on. There are a few different ways that that can happen. If this town were to vote yes tonight, we know that Hamilton voted no, they could have another special town meeting, whether that was because it was petitioned or because the Select Board chose to do that. There's also a district-wide election option available to the school district, and only the school district can make that choice. They'd have to vote by a two-thirds vote of the school committee to call for that election. And just generally, when a project has been approved, when the debt exclusion has been approved for a project, that debt exclusion is good as long as the project is quote-unquote "the same." DOR, the Department of Revenue, does allow for a one-time review of the amount of the debt exclusion based upon essentially market conditions.
Thank you. All right. I believe... We're going to my left. I think that's what I said. Then we'll come to you, sir. Again, name and address. Perhaps it got switched off. There we go. There we go.
Andrea Van Bovin, 20 Middlewood Drive. And I'm concerned about the water issues on the property. I've read the whole article, the report, from the test plugs that they... the wells that they dug, and the takeaways that I came from is that a school this size will not fit on the ledge that they have, and they'll have to move into the water... with the area where the ground is not nearly as solid, and there is a record of a fair amount of water going through there. Someone, a woman, spoke at the school committee meeting on the 5th of this month, who works for a general contractor, and they looked that over, apparently, and she asked them to give a guess, an educated guess, of what it might cost. They said, "We can build a... anybody can build a building on wetland. Just how much is it going to cost?" And I didn't see anything in there, but the reply that she received from her employers was somewhere between $30 and $50 million that I don't find anywhere in this budget. If that's the case, please... if that's not the case, please correct me, but that could be both a delay and more taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tracy, would you like to address the comment slash question? I think we got a question there at the end, so I'll...
All right, we'll be... Yeah, sorry.
Through me, I'll recognize Mr. Nygro. And if you could just identify yourself for the benefit of the town meeting, Mr. Nygro.
My name is Kevin Nygro. I live in Saugus, Massachusetts. I represent the towns of Hamilton and Wenham as your owners, project manager, and all things MSBA, and I consult with the School Building Committee and Eric Tracy. This question has been asked and answered many times, and we... I have no idea where that number came from. It is totally misleading. Our total project site work, all-in, paving, structures, retaining walls, grass, is $12.7 million, which is in line with all other projects of a similar size and type that I've been involved with and that you can research yourself on the MSBA website. Of that $12.7 million, we have roughly $1.5 million dedicated... that $12.7 million, we have roughly $1.5 million dedicated to drainage, in a total of 2.3, the differential 1.5 to 2.3, in all things stormwater and drainage. So the number is off-the-charts wrong. As for water on the site, and the town meeting member adequately points out that a thorough site investigation was conducted by professional engineers, geotechnical engineers, site civil and landscape, and yes, we have water. I think everyone that dug a tree in their backyard know you have water in Hamilton and Wyndham. We were tasked with finding where the water is and determining if it could be treated in accordance with the law, in accordance with permitting that will be required, and the answer is yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Niagro. All right, we will go over to the microphone on my right.
Scott Viall, 25 Monument Street. So I just have some questions regarding costs, and then also-
Maybe you could, can you lift the microphone a little bit?
Yeah, I'll do that.
Give it a try there. Or if you want, just take it out.
How's that? Is that better?
Yeah, that's better. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, so, there you go. So I have a question about cost and also capacity of the schools. So with the cost part of it, the project started in December of 2023, and it was estimated to be $142 million. And I believe there was an 8.9% escalation to cover inflation costs, tariffs, labor costs, and so forth. So what I wanted to do is, there's a lot of companies that you can go on, construction consulting firms. So the 12 months after 12/23, construction costs in Boston went up 4.8%, and they're projected to go up another 5.7% in 2025, averaging about 5% a year. So given that it's $142 million, and when we made the presentation, there was notations about if it ran over $142, there would not be a shovel in the ground. What happens then? Do we come back and ask the taxpayers for more money, or it doesn't get, or enough of the construction doesn't happen? That's my first question. The second one is tied into 3A, because I think we have to consider it. I understand-
Sir, sir, I'm not going to allow questions about 3A when we're talking about the school. We'll get to 3A when we get to Article 13.
Let me put it this way. Let's just say there's 300 to 400 more students in the town. Is the school big enough? And what happens to the high school with that excess enrollment? Okay.
Thank you for rephrasing your question. I appreciate that. Does FinCom wish to address the question about the cost before I turn it to the superintendent? I know your recommendation had touched on that.
With respect to the cost, we've made our comments with respect to the structure of the transaction. I think anything with respect to cost should go to the school committee.
Okay. Mr. Tracy, and if you could address both questions, the cost question and the enrollment question? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The costs that are currently laid out that we see before us are future costs. They're projected to begin the project. If it was voted to start the project, it would actually kick off in the summer of 2026. And that, it would be a two-year build window, so those costs that we see that we're looking at here, this $142 million, is a projected future cost of goods as best we can, given the escalations that our people on the ground, our OPM people and our designers have been working with for several years, trying to keep up with the projections. The second enrollment piece is, if you've got 300 kids in town, if you look at it as an average perspective, they wouldn't all end up in the elementary schools. They would be spread out across the schools. We do have room built into the current project. The MSBA requires a buffer, and in this case, we have 681 elementary students, and there's a buffer of up to 740 and even higher. If you add one more kid to each classroom, you could get into 775. So we feel like, as of now, we have the capacity and enrollment. We also have it at the secondary as well. As we know, enrollment has gone up at the elementary level over the last few years and has dipped down at the secondary levels.
Thank you, Mr. Tracy. Did you have anything further, Mr. Viall? You have about one minute left.
There's a question there about the capacity. I mean, if there's 300 or 400 students, and I understand it's going to be split up amongst 13 grades, including kindergarten, the new school is going to handle about 40% of it. Then you get to the middle school, and you've got three grades, and then you have the high school, you have four grades.
Again, we're going to keep it focused on the elementary school, because that's the article before of us.
Okay, you're right. However, if the high school gets crowded, we're going to have a problem at the high school one day. And then with regards to the cost, because I'm on the fence about the school. You know, I want, you know, if consolidation is the best thing for the town, fine. But at the end of the day, I'm a senior citizen. We had a link. My tax costs are going to be at least $40,000. When it comes to town government, it's hard to get the $40,000 back, even when it's paid off. Plus, if there's an overrun, that bill's going to go up even higher, and I hope everybody understands it. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Science Committee, do you have anything? Do you want to respond on that last point that the speaker made? Do you have anything you want to respond on that last point that the speaker made?
Yeah, with respect to overruns, our, as FinCom said at town meeting, we're not construction engineers. We have to work with the numbers that are provided by the people who are developing the budgets. That said, we think that the procedures are in place to legally and structurally to protect the town against committing to something without having sufficient funds to build the project. That does not guarantee that at some point, if the two towns approve the project, that the GC could not come back and say, we're sorry, we can't build it for $142 million. But you will know that before you put a shovel in the ground. That's, that's the only thing we're trying to tell you, which is, so what I'm trying to say is, whether you approve the project or don't, don't not approve the project because you're worried about the cost over.
And I think Town Council has something to add, so I'll recognize Ms. Goldberg.
Mr. Moderator, through you. I just want to remind people that the only way that money can be spent on a project of this nature is if town meeting appropriates that money. So if the $142 is $142, and town meeting doesn't approve any more spending on that, it cannot cost more than that.
Okay, thank you. We will go to the gentleman in the center.
Eric Sullivan, Perkins Street. I had a similar capacity question. I know we're not talking about 3A, that we're doing that later, but we will be voting on it. And depending on what happens there, we could be having 1,100 or so more units. Do we, with this consolidated school, have enough capacity to meet that number of students?
I think the superintendent just answered that. Mr. Tracy, do you have anything you want to add or clarify? If you feel like your prior answer stands, I defer to you, but I'll recognize it if you wished.
Thank you. When we're looking at capacities in this consolidated school, you're looking at it from the perspective of what we currently have, and then possible additions down the road. We also look at it from the townwide count of students. One of the things that people are unaware of is, we have slightly over 1,660 kids in our school district right now. There's also another 350 students that live in our community that don't go to our schools. Elementary-age kids, high school-age kids, because of the capacity we have for private schools and private programming. So we have to figure that in. The MSBA also has done a very extensive review, is how they came up with the number 740, based on live births, real estate information that's available at the time. So we feel comfortable right now saying that we, with that number, that we'll be in a good place.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Tracy.
And if we don't do the consolidated school, do we have capacity for what we predict with 3A in our current schools?
Again, let's just keep it to within the elementary, not necessarily because of 3A or not because of 3A. But I'll take your question as, what is the current capacity of the present elementary schools for an expanded student body?
Yes.
Could you answer that, Mr. Tracy?
There is no room right now. We're actually in the fall, converting the winter music room to two classrooms for expanding our programs. We have specialized programs that are going to expand. Some people got messages recently that our first graders next year, we had to collapse that down so that we could have a teacher available to move into that expanded program. So we're really tight, especially at Buick. There's really no classrooms left at Buick to even manipulate. So it gives us the opportunity to have appropriate-sized classrooms and also opportunities for all of our programs to exist together rather than having to split them up. So things like our specialized programs for special education right now are expanding because of the way the laws work on ages. We have to keep a 48th month span between ages of children in these programs. So you can't have a first grader and a fifth grader, I mean, a kindergarten or a fifth grader in the same program. So once you have an individual who needs that same program, you have to split it. So that's the process and the issue we're running into right now. So we are very tight right now at the elementary level.
That's what I was concerned with, and if we do have this capacity issue, and we wind up voting on 3A, I think, yes, this is a question for finance, but the reason we sued the state was because we expect that they would have to pay for such a new school. Is that the idea with unfunded mandate? And that-
I'm going to actually ask the select board if they want to address that question, as they were the executive body that made the decision to file that lawsuit.
I would decline to do that, only because I think it's better discussed for Article 13, 3A.
Okay. Great. I was just wondering if that could lead to the funding of an entire another school based on the decision we make with 3A. And the fact that we're making a decision right now feels premature.
Yeah, and again, we're not talking about 3A right now, and I don't want to go far afield. Mr. Chair, do you have anything?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, only to say that the unsuccessful 3A lawsuit, which will be discussed at that time, had no relationship at all to any anticipated school capacity issues or anything relating to the Cutler expansion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Guess we will bring it up with the 3A conversation. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. I'm going to go over to my left. The speaker's been waiting quite a bit, so we'll go ahead. Just name and address.
Hi, Addison Coffield, 25 Juniper Street. I'm a proud product of the Hamilton School System. I went to Buick School, and I've received services at Buick School when I was first diagnosed with dyslexia in fourth grade. You're telling these kids that they don't matter, that they should be in back closets, that they don't deserve an equal education. You can talk about money and taxes and water and space, but you need to remember these are kids, your grandkids, your own children, your great-grand grandkids. These are your kids, and you're telling them they deserve to be shut up in back closets.
Again, please refrain from clapping. Go ahead.
Edward Flynn, Two-Side Lane. Mr. Moderator, there was a motion to move the question. There was a second, and I was unaware that the moderator had the discretion to continue to have the debate.
The moderator does have that discretion.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Yep, go ahead.
Kirsten Alexander, 231 Larch Row. I came here to vote tonight. Our voice is just as important as a Hamilton voter's. We don't know the future, but if Hamilton has another town meeting and we haven't voted yes, then we're back here again. No, thank you. Let's vote tonight. Based on the exhaustive debates this year, it will be very challenging to get both towns' voters to vote for major renovations of school in the other town first, especially at the projected prices we saw. This project is for all our kids in both towns. It happens quickly. If we cannot pass this fiscally responsible choice, I doubt we will ever pass anything, and perhaps that's the point for some people. Please prove me wrong by joining the majority and voting yes.
Thank you. All right. No one at that mic. No one at that mic. No one in the center. I don't see any hands raised in the bleachers for anyone who needs the handheld mics. So, Mr. Flynn, I think we're ready to vote. We will now vote on the main motion under Article 6. A yes vote means that the town approves the borrowing authorized by the regional school district for the new elementary school project. And as the voters of the town have already approved a debt exclusion for the project, the funds required for payment of the principal and interest on the loan will be raised outside the limits of Proposition 2 and 1/2. A no vote means that the town disapproves the borrowing. Under Section 9 of the regional school agreement, this motion requires a two-thirds vote. Voting is now open. I'm going to give it 20 more seconds. Again, if your clicker is not showing the okay yet, press the button that you want a second time or a third time. Green for yes, red for no. We'll give it 10 more seconds. Voting is now closed. All right, the yeas are 350, the nays are 234. The motion fails to get the two-thirds vote required. Onto Article 7, Adoption of Local Option for Creditable Service Supplementation, Essex County Retirement Board Local Option Regulation. I recognize Benjamin Timman of the Select Board to make the main motion under Article 7.
I move that the matter under Article 7 be referred to the Finance and Advisory Committee to study and report to the next annual town meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded, so that there's no confusion. The motion that has been made does not propose taking action on this matter, but instead proposes referring the matter to the FinCom for further study and report back at the next year's annual town meeting. Although the warrant reflects that the Select Board recommended favorable action unanimously, does the Select Board wish to update its recommendation in light of the motion to refer?
No, the Select Board's recommendation stands as a referral to a study committee.
So no longer favorable action as printed in the warrant, but now to refer to the FinCom?
That is correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we were clear on that. The warrant also reflects that the Finance Committee's recommendation on this article is to be made at town meeting. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The recommendation was to postpone until the next town meeting, where we'll do a full review. The recommendation was to wait till the next town meeting, where we could do a full review.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion?
To the gentleman in the back. Dan Sullivan, Woodside Lane. The town's been pushing this off for over a year and a half. It currently affects two members of the fire department that were part-time employees, that became full-time employees. The burden of buying back the time falls to the employee. It's a message to your employees that they, I believe, they don't matter. You're telling a part-time employee that if they do get the rare opportunity to become a full-time employee, that they cannot buy back part of their time. Part of their time getting out of bed at 3:00 in the morning to care for the sick and injured of this town, caring for your property. It's passed in the town of Hamilton over a year ago. Not that I shouldn't maybe talk about that, but it's not a big, in my opinion, not a big cost burden to the town, but it is kind of a slap in the face to the couple employees that are, that this would affect. Just to add, the town of Wyndham Fire Department has only added three full-time positions in over 30 years, so this isn't a big water gate, a floodgate of employees. And I think we should move the question and vote for it.
Does the Select Board wish to respond in any way to address the reason why it has made the motion to refer rather than to take action?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. At the warrant hearing last week, we discussed this particular warrant article with the Finance Committee present. And notwithstanding our strong support for the individuals who would benefit from this particular change, we determined that the Finance Committee had not been given the opportunity- we determined that the Finance Committee had not been given the opportunity to assess the broader fiscal impact of this change. That is to say, what it might cost the town in the future, not just with respect to the employees who would benefit from it in the short term. And so, we understand the frustration of folks who would be affected by this, given that it has been something that's been proposed for a while. But we decided that we would put, on an accelerated basis, and the Finance and Advisory Committee agreed that they would do a study on this as quickly as possible, so that it could be brought forward again for full consideration and a vote at the annual town meeting with a better understanding of the long-term fiscal impact of the change.
Thank you. Does Finance, either Committee or the Finance Director, want to add anything? Doesn't seem like it. Oh, wait, yep. Go ahead, Mr. Sprague.
And I was gonna say that that accurately reflects the warrant meeting and our point here. We don't have enough data in order to advise the citizens and the folks at the town meeting here about what the financial implications are voting for this, so we couldn't rightfully, in good conscience, make a recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Larry Schwartz, Levin Conrath Circle. I would always be hesitant to allow FinCom time they need to make a decision. So I'm not going to be asking for the vote, the vote to be held tonight. Some important factors to take into consideration. Number one, the employee pays the cost of the contribution. Number two, they worked the time. They therefore should be entitled to it. Number three, as the gentleman before me just said, it cannot be any kind of excessive dollars. Well, this town meeting on Monday rightfully passed as a bundled motion. Three items that allowed $1,000 increases for three employees. Deserve it? Makes sense? I wouldn't be surprised if the cost of this motion would be more than that. FinCom has a duty to town meeting to be prepared. Again, I'm not going to ask you to do it now because he's saying you're not, but to come here on this kind of issue and not pay is a disservice to the people who it impacts. Thing I want ultimately for people to remember is that these people put their lives on, in the hands of whatever is before them on any given night. They're out there in danger constantly. We saw recently behind our house, we had a fire that was rapidly coming up the hill. They didn't look for air safety, they jumped right into it. And then finally, through a FinCom perspective, people who've been around a long time realize that call firefighters volunteering year after year after year has saved this town hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars by not requiring a permanent full-time staff. And I think they deserve the consideration pretty quickly in terms of a vote on this side. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Go ahead.
Steve Stanton, 86 Maple Street. Question on proper order. If I were to want to put a motion, to actually put the question, superseding this motion to delay the question, am I allowed to do that?
So what you would have to do is, if you want to propose a motion to take action on this, you would vote no on the motion to refer. The article would still be before town meeting, and then a further motion, main motion could be made, such as a motion to recommend favorable, to take favorable action.
Okay. So can I register my desire to do that after we vote on this?
So, again, if the body were to vote no on the motion to refer, the article would still be before town meeting, and further action could be taken.
Would I be allowed to speak again?
Yes, because that would be a different, the floor would basically be open again at that point.
Great, thank you, sir.
Yes, you're welcome. All right. I don't see anyone at the microphones. Doesn't look like anyone's looking to get the remote mics. So, we're gonna move, we're gonna now vote on the motion under Article 7. Again, a yes vote means that the FinCom will study the local option provision of Chapter 32, Section 42B, which allows for certain public safety officers to supplement their service credit and report back to town meeting under a corresponding article on next year's annual town, town meeting warrant. A no vote, to the point that I just made, means that the matter remains before this session of town meeting for possible further action. This motion requires a simple majority. Voting is now open. So, if you want to refer it to the FinCom and have it come back next year, vote yes. If you want to possibly take more action tonight on this matter, vote no. All right, we're gonna give it 10 more seconds. Voting will remain open for 10 more seconds. If you haven't voted, now's the time to do so if you'd like. All right, let's go ahead and close the vote. The motion to refer fails 234 yeas to 236 nays. So difference of two, by two votes, the matter remains open to town meeting. Does anyone wish to discuss the matter further, including possibly making a motion?
Hi, Steve Stanton again. I understand we have some maybe specific language that's needed.
Could you, could you move the microphone up a little bit more?
I can. I can even speak louder if you want.
Yes.
I don't really need the microphone, but I'll use it. So I'd like to move that we vote on this question.
So what you, what I'm inferring is that you would like to move to approve the article as printed in the warrant. Is that a fair?
That is a fair assumption.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the article as printed in the warrant. Is there a second? It's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion to approve the article as printed in the warrant? Yep, just give me one second. I'm just taking a note here. And before I'm gonna open this one for debate, I am gonna ask the two committees for recommendations on this motion. So, we will start with the FinCom.
The FinCom has no data to make a recommendation on the financial implications of this motion on the town's budget. Thank you.
So is the FinCom's recommendation favorable action, unfavorable action, or something else? And if you need a minute?
Is something else an option?
Not ideally. Can we vote now? Take, take a minute if you need, because that'll give us a chance to get the motion that's been made up on the screen. So bear with us one second while the FinCom discusses. What is the FinCom's recommendation?
So we're gonna, the FinCom is going to vote right now on their recommendation?
Go ahead.
All right, so this is Finspringe Chair. I vote against the recommendation.
This is David Doggett. I vote against the recommendation.
Jared Ward, nay. Papa Batic against.
Okay, thank you. What is the Select Board's recommendation on the motion on the floor?
We're also gonna do it by roll call though, Mr. Moderator.
Proceed.
I vote in favor of the, of favorable action.
Eric Chuesman, in favor.
Dute Perotti, in favor.
Peter Clay, in favor.
Karen Anger, in favor.
Okay, thank you. So, just in summary, the FinCom has a unanimous vote against favorable action recommendation, and the Select Board has a unanimous vote for favorable action on their recommendation. Now we will open the floor to discussion. Can you, is this clicker on? No. Yeah, why don't you come up to the front mic? And we'll work on that back mic while you're taking, taking your comments.
Linda Saunders, 411 Old Country Road. I've typed this up because I was afraid I'd file it up. Having a couple of sons who were call firefighters in Wenham for years, I can honestly say that they put a tremendous amount of time and effort at all hours of the day and night for relatively low pay. My sons moved on to other departments, but those who stayed with the town of Wenham and became full-time deserve time and credit towards retirement. It is a very small amount of money that we're talking about, but they do deserve it because they've been involved for years. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
David Doggett, 5 William Fairfield Drive. Come here as a citizen, not a member of the Finance Committee, but I will note, we have no information on the financial impact. Zero. Zero. If I can't say it again, zero. We've seen the pension costs for the town go up double digits for the last few years. We have no idea the impact of this will have. We would like to do a full review, because I believe that the firefighters and police officers deserve our full respect and their, respect and support, but we need to have a financially stable footing to do this, and we need to understand what the cost is. And we owe it as a town to our taxpayers to ensure that we understand the cost.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Flynn.
Edward Flynn, Tucson, Slane. I think frankly, it's the least we could do. And we spent a lot of money in this town. We are very grateful to our volunteer fire department. I guess this adds a part-time roving police officer and our police officers in general this year. There's been quite a few people out injured, and I think we should all vote yes.
Thank you. All right, no one at that microphone, no one in the center, to the left, yes, go ahead.
Carl Heerdahl, 20 Friend Court. A quick follow-up question for the FinCom. I'm new to this, so excuse my ignorance if I don't know, but it sounds like this issue has come up for a while. Is there any reason why we don't know anything about the financial cost? Thanks.
Thank you. David, who wants it? The question was, why does, why is FinCom's opinion that they don't have the data? Is the speaker's perception was that this issue has been, yeah, at town hall, so to speak, for a little while? Why does the FinCom feel like they do, are not prepared to recommend favorable action?
So this motion was brought in front of the FinCom last Monday at the warrant meeting, and we did not have enough information. We have not been aware of this at all. We have been doing quite a bit of work for the town on the school and on 3A. This motion came out of nowhere, and that's why we have no information. Maybe it's with the Select Board, maybe it's other groups. We did not have this information. We have committed to doing a full review, though.
Thank you, Mr. Doggett. I believe the Finance Director would like to be recognized, so at this time I'll recognize Jeff Sullard.
Thank you. So, the reason we're saying there's no information available, this is a relatively new law. The firefighters had the ability to buy this time back, back in 2022, and that changed due to some court cases. And so, this is new legislation, and we are part of the Essex Regional Retirement System. There are 17 towns in that system, among other, school districts and things like that. Only three people, or only three towns have adopted this new, so we don't know, no one has gone through the full cycle of allowing someone to buy back the time, seeing how that impacts their pension. And this, this particular buyback is assessed directly to the town, as opposed to the rest of the pension liability we have, which is all of the pension liability for the, all of the communities in Essex Regional Retirement is added up, and each of us pays in our prorata share of that cost. This particular thing will be broken out, and in theory, if a police or fire on person took advantage of this after it was passed, the Pension Board would determine that cost and allocate it back to us directly. And so, the, as someone said earlier, the employee will purchase this time. That's 100% correct. But to say that it has no cost is, is not accurate, because we don't know who's buying back the time, what their position will be when they retire, what that salary will be, how many years of service they will have. So you don't, you just don't know what that number could be. It might be this, this only pushes somebody's pension up 2%, but it might push somebody's pension up 40%. So we don't know what, what that, that number is going to be. We're working with the Pension Board to try to get more information on that, and we're working on numbers internally to try to figure out what our exposure is in terms of the number of folks who have call hours that, that could be part of this. And then, we want to be able to make a very rational, well-thought-out decision, sort of something similar to, you know, what Fin had done with the Cutler School Project. So I think, I know personally, I'm very supportive of the call firefighters in my hometown and here in Wenham, and so I understand everybody's sentiments here. But at the same time, excuse me, I think the FinCom, more than anybody, has to take a very analytical approach to this. So while it might feel like the right thing to do, ultimately, if this came back and cost the town hundreds of thousands of dollars, people would look at these gentlemen and say, well, how did you not see that coming? So what they're asking for is time, and that's why they're saying we don't know, because nobody knows yet, because nobody's gone through the full cycle of buying it back and having it assessed to the town on the back end.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna go to the microphone on my left.
Dr. Scott Wang, 266 Grapevine Road. What's the estimated timeline for the FinCom to do this properly? And then, when would this realistic be, be voted again?
So I'm gonna, before I turn it over to FinCom, I'll address the second part of that. Because the prior motion that the Select Board made to refer this to the FinCom and bring it back at next year's annual failed, it would be up to the Select Board to decide when to put it on a future town meeting warrant, or, you know, a citizen's petition if that was properly done. So, it would not necessarily be next year's annual. It could be sooner, it could be later. That's the short answer. FinCom, how much time do you think you would need?
So the, the FinCom and the previous motion was ready to, to have a conclusion for the town by the next annual meeting, which is in April. I, I don't think we're too interested in having a third one in 2025, so I think that's the timeline.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sprague. Go to the center microphone.
Hi, Paul Turi, 12 Spring Hill Farm Road. I guess I'm just astounded that my fellow citizens, given a lot of us are concerned of our high taxes, and realizing how pension situations can be, get a little overblown, get a bit out of control, would choose to vote for something without knowing the financial impact to the town and to the future. You know, we're talking about school expense, we're talking about, can't say it's 3A, but we'll just throw it out there. And here we are with this. So I'm just very surprised. I'm gonna vote no. No, and that's not an indictment on the firefighters and all the great work they do, but just to understand the numbers like the Finance Committee is asking for, I don't think that's unreasonable at all. And I, I just don't think we should let our, I guess, maybe patriotism or support of the firefighters frankly overwhelm what should be an analytical thing exercised on, to understand what the impact is. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Alexander.
Kirsten Alexander, 231 Larch Row. Mr. Moderator, is it possible to table the motion until the next annual meeting?
No. Basically, we, the, a motion to indefinitely postpone, take no action can be made, but you, each town meeting is its own body, a warrant needs to be posted, the Select Board's in charge of that warrant, so you can't table an article for a future town meeting. Even under the motion that the Select Board had made to refer it to FinCom, the Select under the motion that the Select Board had made to refer it to FinCom, the Select Board still would have had to put an article on next year's warrant, either to hear report or the same article in its current form.
So to clarify, if the vote were no tonight, it could not be brought back at town meeting?
Well, yeah. No, it could be brought back at any time the Select Board chooses to put it on a future warrant, or if a citizen's petition were to raise the issue. It's not, as I understand it, Town Council can confirm, it's not a statute-like zoning where there are time prohibitions for bringing it back to a future meeting. So if the vote tonight is no, this could come back at a future town meeting whenever Select Board puts it on, or if a citizen's petition requests it to be put on a future warrant. Anything to add, Town Council?
Right.
Thank you. All right. No. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Schwartz. Larry Schwartz, 11 Conrad Circle.
Ultimately, this is a fairness question. People did the work. They are going to be paying in the amount of money that they would have paid in if at the time it was available to them. For our town to deny them that benefit that they have earned and that they have paid for, I think would be unconscionable. And I think the statement of one of the FinCom members in terms of using a range as high as he did, and people thinking about that, is just not supported by anybody who knows anything about the state and county pension systems in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. I'm not seeing anyone else at the microphones. Doesn't look like anyone in the bleachers is calling for the remote microphones. So we will now vote on the motion to approve Article VII as printed in the warrant. Green for yes is to approve the article and thereby adopt the, accept the local option provision. A no vote, your red button, is to make no change, take no action, to do that local acceptance at this time. So let's open the vote. And you guys get to see the count this time as it comes in, so you get to see a little bit behind the scenes. It's very exciting, I know. All right, we'll give it 10 more seconds. So if you haven't voted but want to, now is the time. Voting is now closed. The motion carries 237 yeas to 224 nays. All right, on to Article VIII. Finance Committee Appointing Committee Composition Bylaw Change. Article VIII proposes a bylaw amendment with respect to the Finance Committee Appointing Committee, a three-member committee that, as the name suggests, appoints the members of the Finance Committee. As town moderator, I am one of the three members of the committee, which brought the article before town meeting to the Select Board for inclusion on this year, this special town meeting warrant. As such, in order to avoid any appearance of partiality, I will step away from the podium on this article, and town meeting will elect a temporary moderator to serve in my place just for this article. Kristin Zampell Noon has volunteered and prepared to serve as temporary moderator for Article VIII of the June 2025 special town meeting, so I nominate her for that role. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I ask Benjamin Timman as Chair of the Select Board to cast a lone vote on this election.
I vote for, I vote for Kristin Zampell Noon.
I hereby declare the election closed with the lone vote in favor of Kristin Zampell Noon. The town clerk will now swear in Ms. Noon as the temporary moderator for Article VIII, and then we will proceed.
We give a net.
Sure.
And it's not to swear, I'm willing for you. That's first.
I broke the mic, sorry folks. Just got to get that cover back on there.
Article VIII proposes a bylaw amendment with respect to the Finance Committee Appointing Committee, a three-member committee that, as the name suggests, appoints the members of the Finance Committee. Oh, excuse me. Thank you. I recognize Robert Prapatic of the FinCom to make the main motion under Article VIII.
I move to approve Article VIII as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. The warrant reflects that the Appointing Committee's recommendation on this article is to be made at town meeting. What is the Appointing Committee's recommendation?
Roger Smirage, 7 Onion River Road. Oh, it's interesting to be different view down here. Madam Temporary Moderator, the Finance Committee Appointing Committee recommends favorable action unanimously.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? I'm not seeing anyone at any of the microphones or in the remote microphones. Mr. Smirage.
Roger Smirage, 7 Onion River Road. Well, I'm down here. I got to take as much time as I can. Just a brief explanation of why this bylaw amendment is being proposed is to avoid, we've got a little bit of a loophole in the current bylaw that would allow the sitting chair of the FinCom to possibly vote on their own appointment or vote against someone who is trying to be appointed at the same time. This could either lead to conflict or deadlock if that sitting chair recused and the Select Board Chair and the Moderator were the only ones left to vote. So the bylaw amendment is simply to close that loophole and give a process in case the sitting chair or vice chair of the FinCom are up for reappointment.
Thank you. We will now vote on the motion under Article VIII. A yes vote means that the town adopts the amendment to the Appointing Committee bylaw. A no vote means no change. A vote on this motion requires a simple majority. We will now open the voting. We'll give it about 10 more seconds. Okay, we will now close the voting. The motion carries.
All right. Get my clicker back up here so you guys can see that I'm not voting on the other motions. Get my voting card tucked away. All right, Article IX. Oh, thank you again, Kristin, for serving as today's temporary moderator. I think we can agree she did a great job. All right, Article IX. Article to authorize the submission and acceptance of the local acquisitions for natural diversity or land grant. The town administrator has requested to make a brief comment, so I recognize Steve Polos at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just quickly, I wanted to make a clarifying statement when I'm sure most of you have read the commentary here, and at the bottom it says that the article allows the town to apply for the land grant of up to $425,000, which if awarded, would contribute and reduce the amount needed from the Conservation Trust Fund, the fund. I just wanted to make it known to the voting members here before us that the Conservation Trust's intention is to spend all $2 million securing the conservation restriction plus the grant should we be awarded it. And I also just want to remind folks that this $2 million is not being raised in addition. It's an existing fund balance in the Conservation Fund that was transferred from CPA funds, Community Preservation Act funds, again, an existing balance at last town meeting if you were not present with the specific restriction for this purpose. So these funds have been earmarked and moved over there, and that is the Conservation Commission's intent, should it need to be. The hope is that the conservation restriction will be an amount less than $2.4 million, therefore reducing the need for the $2 million out of the Conservation Trust and used for other purposes. But I wanted to make that clarifying statement.
Thank you. At this time, I'll recognize Kenneth Widcker of the Conservation Commission to make the main motion under Article IX.
I move to approve Article IX in, as printed in the warrant.
Thank you. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Yep, I see one or two folks heading for microphones. We'll start with my left.
Hi, Deb Evans, 12 Porter Street. I have a question about a couple of things. One is, if you look at the project cost minus the CPA funds that we've already paid into that fund, less a proposed grant of $425,000, there's still a balance. What are we, how are we funding the balance for the project, to do the project?
I'll recognize the town administrator.
Yep, so this is a partnership with Essex County Green Belt, which is a land conservation organization. So they are actually the land purchasers. They would be the owners of the land, and the town would be the holder of the conservation restriction to ensure that the land is not developed and will be used for agricultural purposes and also open space where, you know, residents and other members of the general public can use nature trails and such to enjoy the space and maintain it open in its natural state in perpetuity.
Thank you.
Thanks. So to clarify, the economics of that, is the Green Belt's paying the balance, or how is that?
That's correct. There'll be a number of different funding sources through donors from the, to the Green Belt, as well as there are small pieces of property that could be sold and generated revenue along the main street.
Okay, so I have a follow-on to that. So I enjoy our open space as much as everybody in this room does. That's part of the trademark of our town. But I think also, one of the things that we've gotten to be one of the highest tax rates in Essex County has to do with the amount of conservation land, which is non-tax bearing. So in this, in these two parcels, we're going to be giving up approximately $34,000 of tax revenue. And while that doesn't seem like a lot, it isn't, because there actually, it's 121 acres that's currently zoned as mixed residential and agricultural. Then there's 18 acres that pays vegetable crops that are paying $100 a year in taxes. So if that, if those uses were to be turned over to tax revenue in some way, shape, or form, I would suggest that that might be a good option. I say this largely from paying our tax bills, selling real estate in town where people ask if our tax rate, or our tax bills are a rounding error. But most importantly, I saw it on the Wenham Master Planning Committee for a lot of times. So I'd like to understand the process of evaluation of this parcel, and which of the groups in town had a say in how it was being used.
Town Administrator, like to respond first?
Sure, I'll take a stab at that. I think I got your question. Are you asking an assessment-related question regarding?
No, I'm clear on the assessment. I'm asking what process it went through within town for, to decide how it would be used going forward.
Well, again, the buyer and seller, the buyer is the Essex County Green Belt. So they have partnered with the seller and have agreed to come up with a strategy to try to create a funding plan to conserve the land or majority of land in perpetuity. The town only comes in as the conservation holder. So they've already made the determination. They've asked us to partner with them, and we have these funds that have been dedicated specifically for these, for this purpose.
No, I'm aware of that. I just want to know the process that we're looking.
Ms. Evans, let's let the town administrator finish his comment. You've got about a minute left. I'll come back to you when he's done with his response.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
You know, that's really all. It's just, we're trying to participate in the process. These funds have been appropriated in past years for this purpose, restricted specifically for this parcel, should it become available to conserve. And, you know, the residents of that meeting body voted in favor of it, and we are, this is to allow us to apply for the grant to further participate, not to move forward with the project, as that's under the Conservation Commission's authority. The funds are already under their authority, that and the Select Board. This is simply just the authority to apply for the grant as the state of Massachusetts or Commonwealth of Massachusetts requires a town meeting give approval to apply for these grant monies.
Okay. Ms. Evans, you may continue.
I think I'm done. I guess the one final comment I would have is, I do appreciate open space and conserving land, but I think we as a town need to give a really hard look at the expense of doing so.
Thank you. We're going to go to the microphone in the back. The gentleman was first.
Yes, thanks. David Summonsby, 67 Arbor Street. I'm all in favor of, you know, conserving land and so forth and open space. And I noticed that you mentioned that, you know, you kind of gave the impression that, you know, this was all going to be conserved as open space or agricultural land. But then you mentioned, you know, some other, some portion of it would be, would be developed. And, you know, we're asking to, we're being asked to vote on something here which we haven't seen the plans for, you know, like what percentage is going to be left as open space versus, versus being developed. And so I have another comment, but I'd like to, if you could, if you have an answer to that question, I appreciate it.
So I think the question is whether any portion of this land is set for development. Phil, go ahead. So Phil Coleruso from the Conservation Commission, I'll recognize you at the presenters.
Phil Coleruso, Chair of the Conservation Commission, answer a bunch of questions. First of all, the assessed price of this property is 6.3 million, so we're actually getting a discount. The funding is coming from multiple sources. So the house and the property, as a Green Belt estimates, can bring $2 million into this process. So that's going to happen. Or that, the sale of that house will contribute to the total amount of funds needed to make this happen. The agricultural land will stay as agricultural land. The woods and wetlands will have the conservation restriction. They're not developable anyway because there are wetlands. So there's no loss there. There is no plans to develop anything on this property other than what's already there now.
Thank you. I also have a comment, and that's, I understand that, you know, Essex Green Belt will be managing this. And just from my own personal knowledge, you know, one of the things that they do with some of their other properties is they have, well, it's, their properties are generally open to the public. Some things are limited and restricted, for example, hunting on their properties. And that is clearly, is a non-transparent process where basically people who would like to hunt on a property have to submit their specific request to a particular person, which, well, I won't name, who's part of Essex Green Belt. And he oversees this process, and it's, and it's, it's non-transparent. And it's, you know, the, frankly, the general thought amongst local hunters is that, you know, him and his buddies get, you know, first pick at the good hunting grounds. And anyway, my feeling is, and I'm sure I'm in the minority here, but... And anyway, my feeling is, and I'm sure I'm in the minority here, but as a local hunter, somebody used to hunt right across the street at, behind Burnett's Garage, that's been developed now. And, you know, we keep on losing hunting land, and meanwhile, there's deer population that 100 years ago, it used to be only 1,000 deer in Massachusetts, it's now over 100,000, and it's becoming a problem, such as overpopulation and impacting the airport. So a few years ago, they had to hire professional hunters to come in, and the local hunters weren't too pleased about that. So I personally would like to see that if we're going to be donating $2 million, that, you know, this maybe preference be given to Wenham residents who are interested in hunting the property, which does have plenty of deer on it, and it be more of a transparent process. That's all. Thank you.
Can I, can I respond to that?
I'll recognize Mr. Colaruso.
So a couple of things responded to those comments. One, there is a transparent process. A management plan is being developed. There's a working committee, which includes some of the local residents in the neighborhood, looking at access questions, use questions, such as the hunting. Hunting does actually occur on Essex Green Belt property. It's not widely advertised, but it is a use that they will allow. And again, we'll have the conservation restriction. We're developing, co-developing the management plan for this property. So all those things will be considered.
Thank you, Mr. Colaruso. Mr. Flynn.
Edward Flynn, Tucson, Slayne. I apologize in advance for getting up so many times, but I had a question here. Is this Chapter 60 land?
The agricultural portion, I think, is Chapter 61 land, yes.
So they're just peeling off a part and selling it, and they have to offer it to the town first, and we're saying yes, and we're giving them $2 million, and then they get to keep the land in use for themselves, correct?
Mr. Colaruso, if you have a response, go ahead.
Yeah. Could you rephrase, say that again?
Sure. So they have Chapter 60 land, and they're taking a portion of it, and I think.
Who is they?
The landowner.
So the land, so the landowner is striking a purchase and sale with Essex Green Belt, not with the town of Wenham?
What's the $2 million for? Maybe that's what's confusing me.
So we're contributing to the total purchase price?
But we're not going to, but we're not going to own it.
Mr. Flynn, let Mr. Colaruso finish.
I apologize.
We're not going to own the property.
Yeah. Mr. Flynn, I think town council has some pertinent information that may be helpful if you'll allow me to.
Yeah, of course, of course, yeah.
Recognize Ms. Goldberg.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, through you. What we're purchasing is a conservation restriction, and so we will own, you know, if you think about property as a bundle of sticks, we're going to own one of the sticks that, of ownership for that property, with the idea that if Essex Green Belt ever tried to use that land for something else, the town has the ability to prevent that. I don't think that's what's expected, but it's essentially a guarantee, and it does mean, as the town administrator said, that this land will be protected in perpetuity.
And I want to point out that town meeting, two years ago, approved these funds for the purchase of this property. This is not new.
I'm not, then I'm not sure why.
Mr. Flynn, wait until Mr. Colaruso is done. You've got still more than two minutes. I'll come back to you.
I apologize. I stood up and took a bunch of haymakers at that town meeting, and you all approved the money, and the money's just been sitting there. And so this is one of the properties that the Open Space Committee has identified as a high priority for the town, which is why we restricted the use of this money to that property.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Flynn.
Okay, I understand it's up to you and your board to make this decision, and I'm going to support your decision. I just will tell you in general, Chapter 60 land, when they sell off parcels, parcels like this, I look at them frankly as landbanks. And then from time to time, they sell off pieces of their landbank, and then usually come back with a ton of restrictions on the land, but they're continuing to be able to use it, but they were paid X amount of dollars for that. And I understand that the town of Wenham is going to hold the conservation restriction, and I also understand we're going to maintain open green spaces, and I do appreciate that. It's a personal thing with me, and I apologize. I just, that's all it is.
Yeah. I would just want to draw everyone's attention to what the article actually says, that it has nothing to do with the $2 million. We're asking you to allow us to apply for a grant for an initial $425 from the state. So whether you approve it or not, that $2 million is being spent. So there's really no sense in debating it here.
And just to clarify, Mr. Colaruso, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, if my recollection's wrong, that was under a CPC article from two town meetings ago where that $2 million was appropriated. And town council would like to add, so go ahead, Ms. Goldberg.
Yeah, I just want to clarify the statement made about the $2 million being spent regardless. I think it's important to understand that once that money is put into the Conservation Fund, the Conservation Commission alone has the ability to decide to acquire land, or there's a few other areas where it can be spent, but it does not require the approval of town meeting. So that money was set aside and can be spent by the conservation.
And just to clarify, that action of putting the money into the Conservation Fund is what town meeting did two years ago.
That is correct.
Yeah, okay. I think we're all clear on that now. I'm going to go over to the microphone on my right. I think Ben might have been up before you, Ms. Harrison, but we'll get there. Go ahead, Mr. Timman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you, Ms. Harrison. Ben Timman, Larch Row, Wenham. So there was a question about the process, and I wanted to share what my understanding of the process was, and ask Mr. Colaruso, our Concom Chair, if this is accurate. So this is the Fuller property, as we've discussed, and it's the large parcel on the corner of Topsfield Road and Maple Street. And the matriarch of that family passed away a couple of years ago, and the property passed to her children. And my understanding is that in a very comprehensive process, our talented land use director, Kate Mallory, and others on town staff worked very closely with the family members and with Green Belt to figure out a solution to the use of that property. The family could have decided to sell the entire property or large portions of it to a developer. There may be people in the Roma, as was alluded to before, who, you know, might think that was a good idea for, you know, for tax revenue purposes. But this was a collaborative process, as I understand it, whereby the family, the owners, agreed to work with Green Belt and the town, with the town contributing this one important piece to the puzzle, which, as Chair Colaruso said, had already been approved by the town with respect to the, the conservation land. So there were questions about the process. So my understanding is that this is the culmination of a lot of work, a lot of collaboration, and the agreement of the owner to do something with the land that most people, I think, support, but that requires all of these various pieces and approvals. Then, let me stop this thing. I think that's a very accurate depiction of how it occurred. We're talking multi-year, you know, conversations between the property owners, Essex Green Belt, and town staff.
Right. Thank you. Ms. Harrison.
Yes, Catherine Harrison, 49 Pleasant Street. I'd like to take the history back just a bit, and I think Mr. Colaruso can fill in the details.
Could you just speak a little bit more into the mic?
Some people seem to be concerned that this was done, and it's not the will of the people that this property be purchased. But it's my recollection that some years ago, the Open Space and Recreation Committee did a very broad-based study to identify which properties the folks in Wenham felt were the most valuable to conserve as open space. And this property was, I think there were maybe eight or nine chosen, this was one of the top four. So this whole property, the whole, this whole process began a number of years ago, and it involved townspeople saying, this is a piece of property that we wanted to spend money on for open space. And so everything that's happened has been consistent with something that I believe the townspeople wanted. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Whitaker.
I just wanted to repeat something Phil said.
Name an address just for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ken Whitaker, 17 On Road. I just want to repeat something Phil said to make it very clear here. This has got nothing to do with, this motion's got nothing to do with us. We are asking for available state money to help us purchase that property. That's the motion. That's all. The money's there, we're applying for a grant. There's no guarantee we'll get it, but we're applying for it to buy this valuable piece of land. These are not our dollars. Thank you.
Over on the right. Microphone. Try it now.
Steven Statz, 8 Puritan Road. I just wanted to take the opportunity to say that in this meeting, and many like it, priorities are debated for schools, for public servants, for open land. And I'd just like to say that from one person's point of view, the open land that we have in Wenham is the most precious thing about, and one of the most special things about our town. I would not want to trade it for more tax revenues or development, and I really appreciate the work that's been done.
Thank you. And we will come over to my left.
Corey Sprague, 55 Arbor Street. I move to vote.
There's a second, but there's no one else at the microphone, so we're good. I don't think we need to actually vote on the motion to call the question. We will now vote. On the main motion, under Article 9, a yes vote authorizes the town to apply for a so-called land grant of up to $425,000 toward the town's acquisition of a conservation restriction for parcels located at 9 and 51 Maple Street that Green Belt is in the process of acquiring. A no vote means that the town will not be able to apply for the grant. This motion requires a simple majority. Voting is now open. Voting will remain open for 10 more seconds. If you haven't voted but wish to do so, now is the time. Press your buttons. And voting is now closed. The motion carries 401 yays to 29 nays. Article 10, Amendment to Community Preservation Committee Bylaw to substitute a member of the town Open Space and Recreation Committee for a member of the Hamilton-Wenham Joint Recreation Board. I recognize Bonnie Anderson of the Community Preservation Committee to make the main motion under Article 10.
I move to approve Article 10, as printed on the warrant, with the addition of the words "Open Space and Recreation Committee," as shown on the screen in bold italics.
Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. The warrant reflects that the Community Preservation Committee's recommendation on this article is to be made at town meeting. What is the Community Preservation Committee's recommendation?
The Community Preservation Committee has voted unanimously in favor of Article 10.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing no one approach the microphones, no hands in the bleachers, we will now vote on the main motion under Article 10. A yes vote means that the town adopts the amendment to the CPC bylaw. A no vote means no change. This motion requires a simple majority. Voting is now open. Voting will remain open for 10 more seconds. If you haven't voted but wish to do so, now is the time. And voting is now closed. The motion carries 372 yays to 18 nays. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Article 11, Authorized Grant of Utility Easement on Bukeur School Property. I recognize Gary Cheeseman of the Select Board to make the main, oh, I guess I'm going to recognize Ben Timman of the Select Board to make the main motion under Article 11.
Thank you. I move to approve Article 11, as printed in the warrant, provided that South Street shall be revised to State School Street.
Thank you. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing no one approach the microphones, we will now vote on the main motion under Article 11. A yes vote means that the town will grant an easement on the Bukeur School property to National Grid to facilitate the installation of a new utility pole. A no vote means taking no action. This motion requires a two-thirds vote. Voting is now open. If you haven't voted but wish to do so, now is the time. My wife has pointed out that the text is wrong. That was the point of the correction in the main motion. School Street is the correct address. South Street is incorrect. That, you're right. Thank you. My wife, Jill Smarage. The motion is correct. I apologize. The text of the article is the wrong article text. This is the Bukeur School easement article. The motion, however, to approve Article 11, as printed in the warrant, with the correction to School Street, is the correct motion. So I take, I take it that everyone has voted that wish. We'll go ahead and close the voting. My wife's going to yell at me at the end of the day. It's my warrant. There's nothing. Yes, Ms. Bailey?
Mr. Moderator, so to be clear.
Is this a point of order?
Point of order. To be clear, we are not voting on what's on that screen.
You are voting on the motion, where it says, "Motion, I move to approve Article 11, as printed in the warrant, provided that South Street shall be revised to State School Street." But the text, unfortunately, is the wrong article text. Can we go back one screen, Michelle? That's the article. So we're going to hold voting open for a little while longer in light of the confusion or potential for confusion.
Right. And secondly, when you called for the vote, did you clarify that it's two-thirds or majority?
I did say that it was two-thirds.
Thank you.
Yes. All right. So this is the article.
Correct.
Now, that has the South Street. The motion would correct it to be School Street, which is Bukeur's address. So there's the motion that we're voting on. Ignore all the text above the motion. The article was the prior screen. The motion is to approve Article 11, as printed in the warrant, provided that South Street shall be revised to State School Street. So in light of that, we'll keep voting open. One for yes, two for no. We'll go for another 20 seconds. If people want to change their vote, now is the time they can do so. All right, voting will close in 10 seconds. Voting is now closed. The motion carries 402 yays to 21 nays. That is more than a two-thirds majority, and I apologize to my wife for calling her out during town meeting again. Onto Article 12. Onto Article 12, Authorized Tax-Exempt Lease Purchase Agreement with Energy Systems Group for Energy Management Services. The Select Board has requested that the town administrator be recognized to make a brief presentation on this article, so I will recognize Steve Kulos at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, this article is asking permission to put the last piece in a puzzle. We started this project probably about three years ago. So, the town hall was renovated about 20 years ago, and then HVAC was installed that did not have outside air exchange, which is not always a problem, but given the town's layout, given it's an old structure, the humidity is trapped in the hallways and then sucked into the office and separate rooms that line the outside of the building. When this happens, the individual monitor heaters and cooling units within each room are forced to do double duty as a dehumidifier. The humidity in the building is extremely high. And when this happens, the humidity and condensation collects and runs down the inside of the walls and drips through the second floor into the first floor, causing significant water damage within the building's walls, exterior, and basement. So, the only solution to this problem is to replace the HVAC with another HVAC that integrates outdoor air exchange. So, the last three years, the project cost is just over $2 million. The last three years, the town has been able to secure funding that we didn't have to come to the taxpayers to ask for any additional funds. We've got about half a million dollars in federal funds, half a million dollars through a state grant, about $140,000 in utility company incentives, and CPC funding for historic preservation contributed $390,000. The delta needs to be raised through what's called a tax-exempt lease purchase agreement. This purchase agreement is allowed and set up in such a way where the town is going to install a geothermal system, and this geothermal system will generate utility savings in the form of less energy consumption, so we'll use less fossil fuels, and those savings are guaranteed in the payments of this lease to purchase the equipment to finish the project will be budget-neutral into the future. So, this is money that is going to be saved, is already budgeted in our utility line, and will be saved through reduction in energy costs should we transfer to a geothermal heating system, and those savings, which are guaranteed by the contractor, will be used to pay for the essentially borrowing or long-term lease to, at the end of the lease, to own the equipment. So, you know, with that, we ask for the town to authorize the town to enter into this agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Kulos. I now recognize David Doggett of the FinCom to make the main motion under Article 12.
I move to approve Article 12 as printed in the warrant.
Thank you. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. The warrant reflects that both the Select Board's recommendation and the FinCom's recommendation on this article is to be made at town meeting. What is the FinCom's recommendation?
FinCom recommends approval, four in favor, zero against, one absent or abstaining.
Thank you. And what is the Select Board's recommendation?
The Select Board recommends favorable action, five in favor.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing no one approach the microphones, we will now vote on the main motion under Article 12. A yes vote authorizes the town to execute an energy management services agreement and a tax-exempt lease purchase agreement for financing town hall HVAC, geothermal installation, and energy conservation measures. A no vote means not providing such authorization. This motion requires a two-thirds vote. Voting is now open. All right. We'll hold voting open for 10 more seconds. If you haven't voted but wish to do so, press whichever button you want now, one or two. And voting is now closed. The motion carries 378 yays to 45 nays. That is more than a two-thirds vote. Article 13, Adoption of 3A MBTA Zoning. The Select Board has requested to make a presentation on this article. I recognize Chair Ben Timman of the Select Board at this time to make their presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Ben Timman, Chair of the Select Board. The most important parts of the presentation tonight that you'll hear from the town are going to be coming from one of our planning board members and one of our finance committee members with respect to fiscal impact. I'm speaking just to be hopefully giving a brief explanation as to the litigation that the town filed. A majority of the Select Board, including myself, in April did vote to pursue a Superior Court lawsuit along with seven other MBTA communities scattered across the state against the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities in which we sought certain, I would say, technocratic changes to the way that 3A was being implemented by the state agency in Wenham. We pursued that not with any kind of an understanding that Wenham would be or should be exempt from 3A. We understand from the Supreme Judicial Court decision that was issued in January that 3A is here to stay, and the towns and cities that are MBTA communities are going to have to eventually pass it according to state law, though it's obviously within the power of the town meeting to change zoning. As you may have read in the newspaper, we lost that lawsuit last Friday. All of the towns lost that lawsuit, and we felt it was important, the majority of the board did, that it was in the best interest of the town that we at least seek some ability to make those changes. The court disagreed, and one of the things that the court said in the decision, the Superior Court judge, was that 3A does not require construction of housing. It merely encourages it, and that's going to go to the difference between zoning and actual construction that I think you'll hear in the presentation this evening. So, I would encourage everyone to focus on the merits of the proposal. The Planning Board, as you'll hear, has spent at least two years working on a 3A-compliant proposal. They were not depending on any particular outcome in the litigation. They were focused on a proposal that would comply based on the way that the state is applying the law now, and that's what's in front of you this evening. So, I would respectfully encourage everyone to listen carefully to the Planning Board and FinCom presentations on the merits of the 3A proposal. And as you'll hear, the Select Board has unanimously approved, or voted to recommend approval of our 3A rezoning. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Timman. The Planning Board will now deliver its report on Article 13. I recognize Chair Ann Weeks and Dan Pascarella of the Planning Board at this time to make an introduction and presentation respectively.
Thanks, everyone. As Chair Timman just told you, we have worked a long time on this presentation and on the zoning. We believe it is the best we can possibly do with the materials we have, with the regulations we have. I don't think it's appropriate for me to say more than that right now. I'm going to turn it over to the Vice Chair of the Planning Board, Dan Pascarella, to make the presentation.
Thank you, Chair Weeks. Good evening, everybody. We have the first slide. So, I think everybody's familiar somewhat with what 3A is. It was part of the Economic Development Bill that was passed nearly unanimously by the state legislature in 2020 and then signed by Governor Baker. It requires all of the MBTA communities to create zoning for multifamily housing by right, which means it's not requiring a special permit. The regulations that have been adopted allow communities to choose where to place their districts, and it allows developers to build multifamily housing, as I said, by right without special permit. But there will be other zoning requirements, such as building permits still in place and site plan review. Just by way of general background, we did begin this process two and a half years ago. We started working with outside compliance consultants to help us identify prospective parcels in town that would be compliant. If we go to the next slide? No, thank you. So, Wenham is a commuter rail community, and we have 1,460 existing housing units and 111 developable station areas, area acres. The reason that's relevant is it plays into what our minimum compliance requirements are. We are required to zone a total district size of 24 acres and 365 units, and the statute requires that the gross average density be 15 units per acre. 20% of the district and 20% of the units must be zoned within the half-mile radius of the station area. So, for Wenham, that means 73 units and 4.8 acres are our minimum requirements. The zoning of the remaining 19.2 acres and 292 units can be anywhere else in the community. This last point affected how we were able to pick lots here. The communities are not allowed under the EO HLC process to split lots when we're creating our overlay districts. So, that tied our hands a little bit in what we could choose. So, this is what we are required to zone in order to achieve minimum compliance. If we go to the next slide, please? This is a map of what our two districts are. We have MFOD 1, which is Walnut Larch, and it comprises two lots, and then the Boulder Lane, MFOD 2, comprises five lots. I do want to note here that if you're looking at your warrant, there is an error that's on the map in the warrant. In the commentary section where you look at that map, there are only four lots depicted in the Boulder Lane parcel, but there are actually five, and we'll get to that when we look more closely at MFOD 2. If we go to the next lot? Next slide, sorry. Proposed District 1, this is behind Crosby's. It's 6.3 acres in total. The density in District 1 will be 13 units per acre, which would allot for a maximum of 82 units. The lots specifically are Assessor's Map 14, lots 20 and 21. So, this is obviously in close proximity to the train station. The district is slightly larger than our minimum requirement at 6.3 instead of 4.8, and we have slightly more units because, again, we couldn't split lots here. We had, I think, a 4.7-acre lot, and then the second lot is 1.6 or so. Next slide, please? So, the regulations that EO HLC has adopted do allow us, as I said, to locate up to 80% of the district and 80% of the units outside of the half-mile radius. So, this is the Boulder Lane district, which is very close to here. It's approximately 27 acres in total, but only about 16.7 acres of that is developable. I think there's about, the rest is excluded, wetland. Sorry? Yep. The density in District 2 would be 17 units per acre, and the maximum units here would be 284. The specific lots are Assessor's Map 45 Lot 1 and Assessor's Lot, Assessor's Map 47, lots 2, 3, 3A, and 3B. So, with respect to the error that's on your map, it would be parcel 3 was unintentionally omitted. If we go to the next slide, please? This is just an illustration of a local example of multifamily mixed use. This is Willow Street in Hamilton, and this is approximately 18 units per acre. Just, I believe, is that Treat Bakery? Is that, okay. Next slide, please? Yeah, it is also mixed use. That's right. Thank you, Chair. So, in addition to designating the districts, the Planning Board has drafted the proposed zoning bylaw, and these are a few key features of it. Site plan approval is required for all developments. We've imposed a maximum of three stories. There is a 40-foot setback from residential neighborhoods. Mixed use will be allowed by special permit. Minimum of 20% open space is required. One and a quarter parking spaces per unit. Bicycle parking and EV stations are required. The developments still must meet all Title V Septic requirements. As we said, the density is 13 in MFOD 1, units per acre, and 17 units per acre in District 2. And the Planning Board has required a 10% affordable unit requirement on all developments of at least 10 units, which is the maximum that we're allowed to do under the statute. There is a provision in the bylaw that we've added that says the town will not be responsible for any infrastructure costs associated with development. And we've also included a sunset provision. I just want to take a moment to talk about the sunset provision that's in the bylaw. I don't want to sugarcoat how the AG deals with sunset provisions. The Attorney General's Office looks disfavorably upon sunset provisions. We included a sunset provision to address the possible invalidation of the regulations and the metrics as they were applied to Wenham, because I think a lot of people are aware that there's been litigation concerning 3A. We also included as the last sentence of the sunset provision a non-severability clause, and the reason that the board included that was to protect our position in pending litigation. I will let you know that on Monday night, the board voted unanimously, five to nothing, to delete the non-severability clause of the sunset provision. And the reason we did that is that now that the case has been dismissed, it's no longer really necessary, and we don't want to jeopardize the entire bylaw should it pass town meeting. If we go to the next slide? So, the town of Milton filed its lawsuit, and the, I'm sorry, I should say the Supreme Judicial Court, not the Spirit Court. But the SJC found that the MBTA community's law is constitutional. The Attorney General can enforce the law, and the original guidelines issued by EO HLC were invalidated. However, new final regulations have been promulgated and adopted in accordance with the State Administrative Procedure Act, and those became effective in April. The final regulations do not vary from the original guidelines in substance, and Wenham's obligations remain the same. Next slide, please? So, in response to the pending litigation in Milton, Wenham canceled our fall 2024 special town meeting, waiting for the case to be argued. After the decision was issued, Wenham did submit its interim compliance form, and we are in interim compliance right now. The Select Board sent a letter to Secretary Augustus expressing its concerns about Wenham's 3A requirements and asking for more information. As you heard from Chair Timman, the Select Board filed a lawsuit against the Commonwealth in April with respect to the unfunded mandate and with respect to certain aspects of the Milton decision. That case was dismissed on June 6th, and the town's motions for preliminary injunctions were also denied. The Select Board has also formed a fiscal impact group to study the impacts on Wenham of 3A. That group published its findings in May and submitted the findings to the Select Board at the June 3 warrant hearing, and there should be a yellow hand sheet that was available, and their conclusion in general was that it would be revenue net positive. Next slide, please? So, what happens if we don't comply with 3A? So, by statute, non-compliant communities are ineligible for four grant programs: the Housing Choice Initiative, Local Capital Projects Fund, Mass Works Infrastructure Program, and Housing Works Infrastructure Program. We do not currently participate in any of these programs, but, and this is a big but, the Healy the Healy Driscoll Administration through, I believe it was EO HLC counsel in the litigation made very clear that it is the current policy of the Healy Driscoll Administration that all discretionary state grants to municipalities may be subject to compliance with Three A. Next slide, please. The enforceability of the administration's policy has not yet been determined by the courts, but all grants where the state has discretion on recipient selection or any met, or any matching funds are subject to that policy. It does not apply, however, to non-municipal entities seeking funding for projects or to Chapter Seventy, state aid for public schools. The compliance status is determined at the time of an award and at the time of contracting. If a municipality subsequently falls out of compliance after contracting, the award and related funds will not be rescinded. Previously, we were granted a sixty-five-thousand-dollar grant to update our subdivision rules and regulations in the fall. When we did not meet the previous deadline under the guidelines, the state refused to release those funds. However, they subsequently released them after those guidelines were invalidated. With respect to future grant applications, we just heard about a grant for four-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars that would be subject to this policy. And the town expects to pursue an estimated one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars over the next five years to support master plan implementation efforts. In the fin, I know this is a hard slide to read, apologize, but the, the, the final point here is that the AG has made pretty clear that non-compliant towns may be subject to enforcement through litigation. And with respect to the Milton case, the AG sought a variety of enforcement mechanisms against Milton for being out of compliance, one of which was requesting the appointment of a special master to dictate compliance, or to dictate compliant zoning for the town. Next slide. So we are now here to vote on Three A. With a yes vote, we will submit the proposed districts and zoning bylaw to the AG for approval. If then approved, it would be passed on to EO HLC, and it would take effect immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pasquarello. I note that the planning board still has to make its recommendation, which I will ask for once a motion has been made. Before that happens, however, the FinCom has also requested to make a presentation. So I recognize Chair Phineas Sprague at his time to make that presentation. Hello, Phineen Sprague, Chair of the FinCom. I'm here to briefly discuss the financial implications of Three A zoning. The town established a Three A working group to analyze and forecast the likely financial impact of Three A on Wenham. I was one of the folks on that group, as well as nine other folks, including representatives from the Select Board, town government, planning, and interested residents. There's a twenty-three-page report that can be found on the Finance Department's page on the Wenham website in lieu of printing out and going through that whole thing. Each you should have picked up a one-page summary on the way to the meeting now. I'd like you to please pull that out, and I'd like to make sure you understand the numbers you see there. Thank you, Jeff Sullard, for your hard work in putting together this model. It's much larger than one page. So the top half of the yellow page and what you see on the screen there describes the likely revenue increases associated with a full build out of three-hundred-and-sixty-five residential units, as well as some retail and restaurant space. The working group reviewed many dozens of similarly sized developments in our area to understand the type and bedroom breakdown of the kinds of housing likely to be built. You can see here that about half of the units to be built here are likely to be one-bedroom, with a balance made up of two- and three-bedroom units. It appears that one-bedroom apartments are more popular with builders in our area because you can fit more of them in an acre, and it maximizes the revenue that the builder can make. When you add up all the taxes, and you look in the bottom right-hand corner there, you see that it sums to about four-point-six million dollars of increased tax revenue for the town. Next slide, please. So the bottom half of the sheet and what you see on the screen here covers the expenses that are likely to be incurred. The town will need to hire a number of staff, including especially in the police and fire departments, as well as some other cost increases that with trash collection means spending about a million dollars more than we do now. Now, the more difficult things to forecast is the number of new students that would enter our school system with this increase in housing units. The working group collected a number of reports from different authorities and industry leaders to understand how many students per unit we should expect. It comes down to this. One-bedroom units do not often host families with kids. The data shows it's almost zero kids per unit. As the number of bedrooms rise, the probability of housing the student increases. We're expecting about one kid for every four two-bedroom units, or a rate of zero-point-two-five, and probably zero-point-seven-five kids per three-bedroom unit. You'll recall from the revenue section that most units to be built are likely to be one-bedroom. So when you multiply it out and you get the total average, average students per unit is the number that you see here, the point, zero-point-one-seven-six-four, or about sixty-five kids. If Hamilton implements Three A at the same rate as us, they'd add one-hundred-and-thirty kids to the district that they would need to pay for. So overall, that's about two-hundred more kids to the district in total. Now, it costs the town about twenty-four thousand dollars to educate each student in the district. But adding a single incremental student is not going to mean spending another twenty-four thousand dollars. But as you start to add a larger and larger number of kids, the costs are likely to climb towards that full amount. The working group estimates that for the amount of kids we're forecasting, we'll probably get to about halfway. So about twelve thousand dollars a student. That is the seven-hundred-and-two-thousand dollars you see there, more spending by Wenham on the district than we do now. Now, capital is interesting here, because having just gone through the MSBA process, we're not going to be able to propose any other capital projects for another seven to ten years. This means that we will fill our buildings to capacity and then have to rely on modular classrooms. The working group anticipates that as long as the proposed school is passed, the district will be able to handle the two-hundred additional kids here without the need for modular classrooms. We'll talk about that in a second. Nearing the bottom of the page, you can see that the total increases in spending is about one-point-seven-five million dollars. But that's outstripped by the four-point-six million dollars of increased revenue. So it yields a net benefit to the town of two-point-nine million dollars. Now, the Wenham FinCom relied on the full report to understand the financial impact as part of our analysis that we focused on these assumptions. And especially those assumptions had the largest impact on this bottom line. And number one is the number of kids to be added to the district. So along the bottom of this sheet is a sensitivity analysis. So if the number of kids per unit doubled to zero-point-four, or one-hundred-and-thirty from Wenham and two-hundred-and-sixty from Hamilton, you can see that it is still net positive to the town. You see the zero-point-four there. Incidentally, Wenham's housing stock, which is mostly larger homes with many bedrooms, has a student-per-unit ratio about zero-point-four. So given that the expectation that most of the units likely to be built are one-bedroom, you can understand why it's so very unlikely that the student ratio moves towards the right of this chart. Another major assumption is the cost per student. At sixty-five Ingraham Menel Wenham students, we estimated about twelve thousand a student. That yields the incremental cost of seven-hundred thousand dollars. If we, if this was underestimated and the full twenty-four thousand dollars was needed, it would mean another seven-hundred thousand dollars of spending. But the FinCom notes that this would not bring the net revenue, currently at two-point-nine million dollars, down below break even. So the last major assumption is the number of modular classrooms needed. These cost fifty thousand dollars a year. So if we needed, say, ten classrooms to house two-hundred additional students, that's a half a million dollars, five-hundred thousand dollars for the district, of which Wenham pays about a third, or about one-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars. Again, not significant enough to change that net positive tax impact. So the conclusion that the FinCom has come to is that the two-point-nine million dollar favorable impact on Wenham taxes is large enough that each of these assumptions going unfavorable would not mean it enters negative territory. So the Wenham FinCom has therefore decided to issue a recommendation to the Select Board for favorable action on the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sprague. I now recognize Ben Timman of the Select Board to make the main motion under Article Thirteen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to approve Article Thirteen as printed in the warrant with the following amendments. One, that Section CC entitled Sunset Provision and Appendix Five be amended by deleting the final sentence, which reads, notwithstanding paragraph CC above, this provision shall not be severable. And number two, that the following language be inserted in Page One of Appendix Five of the Wenham zoning bylaws to reflect the map currently displayed on the screen. A, in Section two-five-five dash three-point-two-point-F, after the bulleted multifamily overlay Sub District One, or MFOD One, quote, Assessor's Map fourteen, lots twenty and twenty-one. B, in Section two-five-five dash three-point-two-point-F, after the bulleted multifamily overlay Sub District Two, or MFOD Two, quote, Assessor's Map forty-five, Lot One, and Assessor's Map forty-seven, lots Two, Three, Three A and Three B.
Thank you. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. The warrant reflects that the recommendations of the Select Board, FinCom, and Planning Board on this article are to be made at town meeting. What is the Planning Board's recommendation, Mr. Pasquarello? I'll recognize you.
Planning Board recommends favorable action unanimously.
What is FinCom's recommendation?
The FinCom recommends favorable action on the motion.
Was there a vote number?
There was three, four, one abstention, and one not present.
Okay. And what is Select Board's recommendation?
The Select Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of Article Thirteen.
Thank you. As with the school project, I understand that this is a contentious issue, all sides of which want to be heard. So I again ask that regardless whether you stand in support of the zoning amendment or against it, do you remember that we are all neighbors here, and presumably everyone believes that they are acting in the town's best interests? Again, we act tonight as a community. So please again be respectful of everyone's opinion. Did a great job on that, on the school again tonight on Article Six, and just like we did back in April. So again, one last reminder, please refrain from cheering, booing, and things like that. Here again, ultimately, your voice, your vote will be your voice. With that, is there any discussion? Mr. Flynn.
I'd like to defer to my very good friend Augusta Air standing at the microphone over there, if that's okay with you, Mr. Moderator.
Certainly. Over on my right.
Would you mind taking us back?
Uh, can we maybe, maybe speak into your microphone?
Would you mind?
First of all, name, name an address.
Augusta Air Walnut Road, Wenham.
Thank you.
Would you mind going back a few pages to the area which showed what we would lose if we don't comply?
Could we go back to the?
It's like four pages back.
Yeah, no, it was part of the planning board presentation. I know what you were talking about. Yes. Can we go back to, uh, in the planning board presentation?
One more, perhaps. Go forward.
I think it's, I think it's a couple of slides ahead. That one, yeah. Is that what, that the one you were looking for?
No, it actually had numbers. It might be one more forward. There.
This one.
How many people do we have between the two towns? Just under fifteen thousand? Is that right?
I'm sorry, could you?
Between the two towns, we have just under fifteen thousand people, right?
Are you asking for the population of the two towns?
Yeah.
Does anyone up here know the population of the two towns? The clerk can forward and say that we're five thousand. Wenham is five thousand people.
Hamilton is like, what, ninety-five?
No, no, like seventy-five.
Mr. Flynn, Mr. Flynn? It's not, no. That's not how this works. She poses a question. I see if anyone has that information available. I will recognize you, and if during your three minutes you want to chime in on that, I welcome you to, but you don't get to answer her question without being recognized by me.
Let's just overdo it and say there's ten thousand.
Go with an estimate and continue.
Fifteen thousand between the two towns. So if we don't comply over the next few years, we're looking at not getting from the government, which is broke. Uh, five-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand plus sixty-five thousand, which is six-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. If we divide that by fifteen thousand people, it's about a couple hundred dollars per person over a few years. And I can guarantee you almost every single person in this room would be willing over the next bunch of years to come up with just a couple hundred bucks and just be done with this. It's just a couple hundred bucks per person. But why be held up by that and have to double the size of our town? It's, and ruin the, the whole beautiful ruralness of this, of this town, of both towns. And, and add buildings, and add traffic, and add cops, and add firemen, and add this, and add that. Screw it. Couple hundred bucks per person, and we're done. That's all you'd need to do. We waste that, each of us, every year, I would bet. Thank you.
Thank you. Would Mr. Pasquarello, would you like to address the characterization of your presentation?
So the, the, the purpose of this slide was to show a few examples of discretionary grants that we either intend to apply for or are likely to apply for or have applied for. Those aren't the only enforcement mechanisms against the town. And I would direct your attention to the last bullet point on that page, which says that non-compliant towns may be subject to, I would suggest to you that it is more like will be subject to enforcement litigation by the Attorney General. So one of the things that we're considering tonight is whether we maintain control of this process or not. So I would also keep that in mind.
Thank you, Mr. Pasquarello. I believe Town Council also has some additional information relevant to the impacts of non-compliance. So I'll recognize Ms. Goldberg before proceeding.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, through you. So I know there were some grants that were summarized there, but the list is actually much longer, just so people are aware. There are community planning grants, the Massachusetts Downtown Initiative Grants, Urban Agenda Grants, Rural and Small Town Development Fund Grants, Brownfields Redevelopment, Site Readiness, Underutilized Properties Program, Collaborative Workspace Program, Real Estate Services, Technical Assistance, Commonwealth Place Programs, Land Use Planning Grants, Local Acquisitions for Natural Diversity, the Land Grants, and Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness, Planning and Grant, and Project Grants. So there's a whole large amount, a raft of grants that could be put at risk. And I also just want to point out, this isn't a static list. It could be increased at any time. We have seen, obviously, that EO HLC and the Attorney General are interested in forcing compliance. And so, you know, we really can't say what will happen if the town doesn't at least try to accomplish Three A zoning that meets the requirements of the law. And I just, I want you to understand, I'm not taking a position on whether it's a good thing or a bad thing, but I do want you to understand that there are implications for choosing not to move forward.
Thank you. I think you have about twenty seconds left, so. Try now.
Okay, so how much? What, when we all talked about that it's a year ago, we only had approximately twelve thousand dollars in grants that we would be penalized. That's what we were told a year ago. So how much? You should know these numbers. You should have them ready for us to know. How much?
And that's, that's your twenty seconds. Thank you.
Does she answer?
I, I, I don't think Town Council, Town Council can speak for Town Council.
Um, Mr. Moderator, through you, um, that, that's really not the point of what I was trying to express. I don't know whether the town is going to want these grants or not want these grants, or whether the town would apply for these grants or not. It's just important to know that they will be unavailable to the town, and also to note that the legislature has already acted to expand the number of grants. Initially, there were many fewer grants on this list, and they were expanded by the state legislature. So we can't predict with any certainty what this will look like over time.
Thank you. Mr. Flynn.
Edward Flynn to Science Lane, Mr. Moderator. I wanted to address first, and I want to do it very quickly, the yellow sheet of paper put together by the head of the Finance Committee and the working group. And it says that, according to what I'm reading here, that at Boulder Lane, there's going to be two-hundred-thousand-plus square feet of retail space and sixty-eight-thousand-plus of restaurant space. So I spent some time this afternoon because those are huge numbers. So I took some time this afternoon and I looked up the average size of a Home Depot in the United States is a hundred and four thousand square feet. So if that, based on what they're telling us, we could put a Home Depot, a Stop and Shop, and a Whole Foods, and yes, I looked up all the square footage for all of them. In that space on Boulder Lane with nothing around it, no people live there. It's all, it's it's ridiculous. It's not going to happen. The second thing was, in there, and by the way, they're they're saying that we're going to get three hundred and, sorry, five hundred and sixty-seven thousand plus or minor dollars from that. The second thing was they're talking about restaurant space of sixty-eight thousand plus. And I did a little study this afternoon in the National Restaurant Association website, and this is hurting my back, so I'm not sure what I could do.
You can raise that.
Huh?
Or you go ahead and take it out. Just make sure you put it back when you're done.
I don't want to do that.
Okay, you can pivot that. You should be able to.
I apologize.
No, no need to.
To everybody. We could put in sixty-eight thousand square feet, and I looked up the average square footage for each one of these restaurants that we're all going to know in the United States from the National Restaurant Association. We could have up there a McDonald's, an Olive Garden, a Chipotle, a Wendy's, a Burger King, a Starbucks, a Subway, a Chick-fil-A, and my wife and I's favorite, a Lobsterland. And that would equal thirty-three thousand square feet, equalling about fifty percent of the space for the restaurant. So I guess what I'm saying is we could have two of all of those up there. Actually, what I'm really saying is the five, the eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars that we're going to get in what they're calling new growth. And if people, I'm assuming that people here don't know what new growth is. New growth is a one-year incremental increase to the taxes. The second year, that money, the eight hundred and sixty-four thousand or whatever the value is, goes into the tax base. And it does, it's it's a one-time thing. Yes, we charge taxes on it. The second thing I want to talk about really quickly was the number of students. And I know that the working group used a really, in my opinion, slanted of view of the places they looked at. The the vast majority of them have one bedroom and some of them are two bedrooms. When I did my study, I used two places. Am I almost up?
You're up. That's three minutes.
Can I have three seconds, about 30 seconds or 15 seconds?
You can have 10 seconds to wrap up, Mr. Flynn.
All right. So I come up with four hundred and, I'm using the Concord Plan, which says that there's four hundred and ninety-nine students, which is point four five. Lastly, I want to say, and this is the most important thing, if it doesn't matter how we vote, why are we here?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Flynn.
This is absurd. We have to vote.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. That was more than 10 seconds. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know we've got Mr. Ward over on my left, but I believe the people in the center were at the microphone first, so if you don't mind, we'll go, we'll keep with the center line for one or two more speakers before jumping over.
Uh, Natalie Bowers, Sixteen Porter Street. I live there with my husband and our two kids. Um, I am here tonight to speak in very, very strong support of the multifamily overlay district and the adoption of the MBTA Communities Law. Now that the recent lawsuit has been dismissed, Wenham faces a clear choice. We can adopt a reasonable zoning plan that meets the state's requirements, or we can continue wasting time and taxpayer dollars fighting a law we are obligated to follow with strong bipartisan support. Just speculating, but perhaps the cost of that lawsuit is enough to cover the cost of the firefighter buyback program. What else is on the block? Worse, if we stay out of compliance, we put ourselves at risk of losing access to the key state grants that were listed in Mr. Pasquarela's presentation and housing grants, uh, and losing access to key state infrastructure. That land grant that was mentioned in the housing is definitely mentioned at least once that I've been aware of. Uh, so this is real and it's hitting home now. We've had a lot of time. This law doesn't force us to build anything tomorrow. This is all fear-based. It it's not accurate that we're suddenly going to have massive development. Um, we we can't even sustain it. We all know why. We don't, we have a three-story cap and we have a limit on septic. It simply gives us the local control to decide where and how we allow for more housing. To Mr. Pasquarela's presentation, the state can and will, if we do not comply, dictate compliant zoning for the town. It is a a privilege for us to vote on this today. Uh, everybody's on board with it. Planning Board, FinCom, Board of Selectmen, unanimous support. Let's listen to our leaders. Let's move forward, not backward. Let's stop wasting time, money, and goodwill. I support Article thirteen and I urge others to vote yes, so we can be in compliance, plan responsibly, and preserve what we love about Wenham while opening the door just a little bit wider for others. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. We'll go one more in the center and then we'll go over to my left.
James Goudy, Twenty-eight William Fairfield Drive, high rise in support of this article. I had one clarifying question. Uh, in the presentation, it was mentioned that multifamily, excuse me, overlay district two had a maximum density of seventeen, I believe. But in the warrant on page nine, I believe it's eighteen.
Mr. Pasquarela?
That's an error in the warrant. It's seven, the density is seventeen, and if you multiply seventeen by sixteen point seven acres, you get the two hundred eighty-two number.
Thank you very much.
Fairwell, I'm conferring with Town Council on something regarding that last question. So, uh, my, yeah, okay. Uh, I know we've got speakers, uh, in light of the comment that the last speaker made and the clarifying, uh, remarks from Mr. Pasquarela, I'm going to recognize Mr. Pasquarela further at this time.
Okay, so, um, I'm going to make a motion to amend the motion on the floor to include a further amendment, um, to correct the text in Article thirteen where it says eighteen units to seventeen units density for M F O D two.
And just to clarify, Mr. Pasquarela, that would be proposed section two, fifty-five dash twelve dot six U. Sub two. On page nine of appendix five. Two. Is there a second? The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Just a clarifying amendment. So what I'm going to ask is if anyone has a question on the clarifying amendment that Mr. Pasquarela has proposed, let's just come over to this microphone on my right where the gentleman who I saw stand up when I asked if there's any discussion on this motion to amend. So, uh, go ahead.
Yes, I'm still Steve Stanton. I still live at eighty-six Maple Street.
I'm sorry, can you speak into the microphone?
Yes, I am still Stephen Stanton. I still live at eighty-six Maple Street until some of you decide to throw me out.
Again, you need to speak into the microphone. You can't keep turning away.
Directly, too. I can't look anywhere. All right, I got you. Um, so just a point of order, uh, Mr. Moderator, we now have an amendment to an amendment. We've had several incorrect.
I'm going to cut you off just because it's a point of order and you.
Or.
We just wait. Oh, I'm going to try to clarify this and maybe I'll get to the point of your your remarks. Then we have a motion to, uh, we have the main motion, which is as set forth on the screen, and that contains some further revisions to the proposed bylaw. That's not a motion to amend, though. That's the main motion. We now have Mr. Pasquarela's motion to amend the bylaw with this further clarifying correction to, uh, in that subsection U for the maximum of eighteen to read maximum of seventeen, as consistent with the presentation and the intent, I believe, of the planning board.
All understood. Where are we writing that down? Who's writing that out?
The town clerk has recorded the motion.
Where do we get to see that? Where are the legislative body? We're supposed to be able to know exactly what it is we're voting on. Do we get to see that on the screen?
So if you look at page nine of the appendix in the warrant book, if you look down at section U, maximum density, sub item two, there's a maximum of eighteen dwelling units per acre. The amendment would be to change that to read seventeen.
Yes, I I take my point, Mr. Moderator, and I know that I'm bordering on being a jerk, but we've had many incorrect things. We've seen incorrect stuff on the screen.
Yeah, I'm not going to require this motion to go up on the screen. I think it's a pretty simple clarification motion. We've made specific reference to the appendix. We've still got a good amount to do on this article tonight. I'd like to just vote on the amendment, or if there's any other discussion on the motion to amend, we can do it. But I don't think this minor correction requires us to take the time to get a slide up. So I hear you, but I'm going to say we're good with the verbal motion and the reference to the appendix. Any other discussion on the motion to amend? Yeah, I'm going to do, and I'm going to do voter cards on this one, just to expedite the process. I think it's, uh, pretty straightforward. So I'll give you a minute to, uh, get your voter cards. I know some people are at the microphones and may not have them. And the motion to amend is a majority vote. So all those in favor of the motion to amend, raise your voter cards. Thank you. Lower them. All those opposed to the motion to amend, raise your voter card. The motion passes overwhelmingly. So now we will continue with discussion of the main motion now as amended by that clarifying amendment. Uh, and we're going to go over to the left and Mr. Ward, Jared Ward, Mayflower Drive, FinCom member, speaking as private citizen.
I want to commend the work of the planning board. I want to agree one hundred percent with the very eloquent statement of, I believe it was Ms. Bowers. I would like to ask the room a question. Has anybody in this room ever had the pleasant?
Uh, sorry, sorry, Mr. Ward, I I didn't question. Please refrain from referring to prior speakers by name, just a reminder.
Sorry, I'm, okay. Has anybody in this room had the pleasure of working with a special master? I've had decades of experience doing so. It is not a pleasant experience. Please approve this. Otherwise, your worst nightmare looms on the horizon.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. All right, uh, I'm going to go to my right. This gentleman's been waiting. I know you've been waiting, and I know Ms. Bailey is waiting, but I'm going to go to the gentleman on my right.
Thank you. Scott File, Twenty-Five Monument Street. So I I do have a a few questions. Uh, what has to do with the previous speaker from CS Lane on the retail space? Are we going to have any control what goes into that retail space? I mean, do we want a Home Depot in our town? I mean, it just seems odd to me when, you know, a few years ago, we weren't sure if we would want to Dunkin' Donuts. Um, the other thing is is infrastructure costs. Uh, who would be responsible for that? Gas, electric, road repairs, cell service? Is that part of the the building process? I mean, they're going to tear up the roads. I mean, who's going to fix them? Um, is was there a traffic study, given the amount of cars that could be added, especially with the retail space? I mean, Hull Street and, um, and Grapevine Road are kind of small. Do we have any idea how it'll impact the town? And lastly, who's control of the bidding process for the contractors? Are we going to be doing that? Those are my questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. B. I'm going to recognize Mr. Pasquarela to respond to the best of his abilities.
Um, so with respect to retail or mixed use, mixed use still requires a special permit, so they would need special permitting from the town to put in any retail. The only thing by right is multifamily.
We'd be just looking at a bunch of empty space?
Um.
I mean, it's a lot, two hundred thousand square feet is a lot of space.
Uh, you're asking questions about the fiscal impact group, their assumptions on the yellow sheet, right?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just looking at the space that's been allocated.
Right.
Curious about what would go in there.
So from the planning perspective, before any mixed use would go in, and by mixed use, I mean non-residential, so retail, restaurant, whatever, that still requires a special permit, which is discretionary with the town. So if we didn't want a Home Depot, we don't have to grant a special permit for a Home Depot.
I mean, is that something that we should be thought of in advance, given the type of town that we are, or are we going to make exceptions down the road?
So this goes to what three A is, and we said this at previous forums that we had, this is a zoning exercise. This isn't a construction exercise. So all that we are doing as a planning board is creating the zoning that we're required to create and designating the districts. So nothing actually has to be constructed. So I mean, you've obviously got a sliding scale here from zero units to three hundred and sixty-five. Is it going to be zero? Probably not. Is it going to be three hundred and sixty-five? Probably not. It may be something in the middle.
And, uh, does the FinCom wish to add anything at this time with respect to their analysis? I'm trying to recall the question. Was the question whether or not we should allow commercial development in our town in order to offset the costs?
No, I what?
The property tax costs that the residents are paying?
I I didn't break up the the property tax. I was just curious how the retail space and the commercial space would be used, given our town.
Okay.
And what we have and what we don't have. I think he answered the question.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I just didn't know if if the the Finance Committee, having aired that sheet, had anything further they wanted to address.
Well, I did have a question about what would happen if it actually did raise almost three million dollars annually, where that money would go. What would it be used for? Uh, I mean, if we could build a new school.
It's 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 hard to speculate exactly what it would go for, but it it would mean a lot more taxes that would be put into the the general fund. And as a, we would probably go to another town, a town meeting like this and and decide what our budget is, right? And if we didn't need to, if we had a surplus of money, that would have an implication to reduce property taxes for residents. But it's hard to speculate. This is going to take years to build, and whether it's zero to start with or three sixty-five at the end, it's a, it would be a slow growth over time to make that decision.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll go to the center microphone.
Hey, again, Eric Sullivan, Perkins Street. My question, uh, really comes back to, again, capacity. Um, I don't like the three A, the zoning, what we're doing here, how it's going to change the town. Um, I would definitely vote no for it as is, but I'm really worried that the state might force us, and that's what we're voting for. We're trying to be compliant. At the same time, with the school that we did not approve, we have a capacity issue, as the superintendent said. I don't know where we're going to put all these students. I don't have an answer to that. It sounded like it was going to be modular units for at least seven years. What I'm curious is, was there a proposal, like, could we amend this to say that we will do this zoning if there's a condition like the severability clause? If we get the forty-nine million MSBA grant, could we amend it to accept?
No, that would be, first of all, beyond the scope of the article. Uh, Town Council would probably have some additional input on that, even if I ruled it within scope, but that would not be within the scope of the article.
Okay, the reason that I was going along that thought is that, um, whether it's an unfunded mandate, I think, is really important. And if the distinction isn't known to everyone, it's because if the state forces us to do something, say, have to build a new school for all these students, and it's an unfunded mandate, the state is supposed to pay for it. That was one of the things that was going to happen in the lawsuit. Um, I don't want to stop pursuing that. I still think that the state should be paying for this. I would really prefer if we could do some way that, um, we accept the three A zoning with a severability clause such that we don't have to fund an entire new school. clause such that we don't have to fund an entire new school. But there's no amendment, was there a consideration for such amendment to the zoning to allow us to be compliant with what they're saying, we'll also be able to get out of it.
I'll allow Mr. Pascarello to respond to that. If that was a consideration the planning board made, I'll also recognize Ms. Goldberg as town council to chime in.
Mr. Moderator, through you. That would be specifically non-compliant. It would not be approved by the attorney general. It would be stricken, in my opinion. Bear in mind that this 3A zoning is not going to force the town to build a school. They're two different things. If, in fact, you wind up with enough children that you have outgrown your school space, then the town will be required to respond to that because that is a requirement of state law. That is completely different than this zoning. This zoning proposes a district where it would be possible to build. As was just explained by the planning board, mixed-use development will still be subject to a special permit, which deals with all the things that people are talking about, traffic, you know, congestion, the way things look, the way things, the way that the parking looks, all of those things. That's the 3A zoning. That is authorizing or enabling potential building, but it is not creating all of those units. There is no one who's waiting at the ready that I'm aware of to come in and make a proposal to develop all that space. And even if someone did come in to seek to develop, it would happen on a project-by-project basis under the direction of the planning board for the mixed use. So the school and this are not the same thing.
But based on the costs, if the planning, say, mandated that these were four-unit rooms, we know that it would have.
Could I just add, speaking to the microphone a little bit more?
Yeah.
Yep, thank you.
If it was mandated that these were four-unit, multi-unit families, what we saw on the, one of the previous pages is that it would be a loss for us. We would be losing money every year. We could make that decision.
Done. I'm, I don't, I'm not sure. Could you repeat the question?
The thought is, if it was amended such that we require larger units with the zoning, we know that that would be revenue negative. We would lose money.
Mr. Pascarello?
So we can't dictate what the development would be. So we are creating a zoning district that says multifamily by right. It has to be in accordance with the regulations that have been promulgated by EOHLC. So we can't say multifamily by right, but you can only build four-bedroom, or you can only build two-bedroom, or one-bedroom. We're not able to do that.
Okay. Great, thank you for the clarification. I don't think I.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go over to the microphone on my left, Ms. Bailey.
Michelle Bailey, Remington Road. I just want to clarify that the part that's down here on Boulder Lane is owned by two different owners. Is that correct?
Mr. Pascarello. Do you want to stay up there, Dan?
Sure.
You're welcome to. I'm not making you, but you're welcome to.
So one of the lots is owned by a private entity. I think it's the Brady Development LLC. The other four lots are owned by the town.
Yep. And then the two that are closer to downtown, who are those owned by?
I believe one is owned by the entity that owns Crosby's, and the other is owned by either National Grid or somebody, some kind of utility.
Okay. So these lots are not ones that are likely to be purchased by developers? And the ones by Gordon College would require a town meeting vote, is that correct, for the town to sell those lands?
Town council?
That is correct.
At least with respect to the town on.
With respect to the town and with respect to development of the other properties, if the owners don't choose to develop, then there would be no opportunity to develop there either. The zoning is just overlaid on top of the actual parcels.
So we're voting tonight to come into compliance with the state law. Parcels that are very unlikely to be developed. We're unlikely to get the revenue, and we're also unlikely to experience the expense. I personally worked on a committee to try and get development at Boulder Lane about 10 years ago with two other gentlemen here in the room. And we found that that was going to be a very difficult thing. And we thought it would be great because it would bring revenue. But 10 years later, and study, a couple of studies later, we still haven't seen development there. We should not be afraid that we're going to be taken over and increased. We should be hopeful that someone will find opportunity on that land and will build something where maybe the adult children that showed up today to this town meeting could go and live, because they're all living with their parents right now, because there's nowhere in town for a young adult to live for a reasonable price. So I'm going to vote yes, even though I don't believe the state has the right to tell us what to do. But I do believe we need to come in compliance, and I do hope that someone will develop Boulder Lane.
Thank you. I'm going to go to the microphone on my right.
Hello, Andrea Van Boven, 20 Middle Drive. We have to be informed and remember that this is, this is by right. Once you vote in this mechanism, it'll slow it down, or, sorry. Once you vote in, there's no mechanism to slow it down. You give up local control. To vote in, you need a simple majority, and to repeal it, it's a two-thirds majority. When I say give up control, the Gloucester Harbor Overlay District has to get state approval before making changes to their districts, to the state. Again, be informed. If this sounds great to you, then vote for it. If it doesn't, please vote against it. Some tales. Some people think it'll be 20, 10 or 20 years before this happens. But in Lexington, they passed 3A. The state required 1,400 units, and in less than a year, 1,000 units were under development. If we lose our grants, we've already talked about that. This will bring.
More supportive.
Housing, that's not necessarily true, but there is no limit to the number of bedrooms you can have in any one of these places that they put in. And so that means we don't know how many children are actually going to be in our school systems. That will affect all, of course, the fire department, as well as police department, and all of those expenses that are not included. There's lots of different ways to calculate that. This was one presented favorably. There are many that are not favorable. So, and the legal fees that we will, we've talked about a little bit, but the legal fees that we might incur by standing up against it, I think that the expense in the long run and what it does to the nature of our town is not going to be worth it, to worry about it. We don't have to worry about those legal fees. It's going to be worth it to be able to sustain our town. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to the middle microphone.
My name is Salvatore Celeste, 20 Puritum Road. Hi, guys. I'm not a politician, and I'm not a city planner. I'm a scientist. I'm an engineer. So I tend to look at things objectively on the best factual data I can find. So tonight, I want to talk about our water supply. Today, Wenham is under a mandatory water restriction, which means we don't have enough water right now. We've seen all the signs on the way here tonight, but nobody seems to be talking about the water, and I find that kind of curious. On the other hand, I hear a lot of talk about the water and the sewer and the infrastructure, and who's going to pay for it, but never about the actual supply of the water. Why is that? Well, when it comes to water, infrastructure is just a system of pipes and valves, and it's not to be confused with the supply of water that fills those pipes. Infrastructure doesn't include the water. Keep in mind, keep, or keep this in mind while I read to you what the Ipswich Watershed Association and the Salem Beverly Water Supply Board has to say about Wenham's water supply. Wenham gets its drinking water primarily from Wenham Lake, which is part of Salem and Beverly Water Systems Board's system. The lake is supplied by our water table. Remember the water table part? That's a system of streams from Beaver Pond, Norwood Pond, the Puttenville Reservoir, the Longham Reservoir, and ultimately the Ipswich River. This system is designed to meet the existing demand, but population growth, or increased per capita use, will likely strain its capacity. The Ipswich River, a key supplemental source, is only pumped during high flow months, and over-reliance on that source will likely face environmental restrictions as the river is already stressed the current regional water demand. So what exactly do we mean by the water table? Well, think of it as one big bowl, and inside that bowl are the ponds, the lakes, the rivers. They're all interconnected, and they combine to form our water supply. It really doesn't matter which bottle of water you draw from, the water level goes down on all of them. That's why you're not allowed to have a sprinkler system in, a non-meeting sprinkler system in your backyard, because even that well in your own backyard draws from the collective water table. So it really doesn't matter where in the bowl you stick your straw. What really does matter is how many straws are drawing from the bowl. And 3A could easily, easily add 1,100 new straws, and there simply isn't enough water in the bowl. This is an undeniable fact, period. The developers want 3A, and they would gladly pay for infrastructure because they don't.
Mr. Celeste, your three minutes are up.
Can I have, can I ask everybody for another minute?
You can have the 10 seconds to wrap up.
They don't care because they're putting in pipes, and they don't care if the water comes through those pipes because it won't be noticed until the place is occupied and those units are sold. They will take their money, and they will leave this town, and they will leave a high and dry.
Thank you. No shouting from the floor. Your ti, your time is up, Mr. Celeste. Okay? I'm going to go to the microphone on my left.
Oh, there we go. Thank you. Thank you, Chuckdam9GrapevineRoad. I have a couple of comments on this. One, I'm not speaking on behalf of the Water Commission, but I am on the Water Commission, and we do not get our water from the Salem Beverly Water Supply Board. We have our own water. And I agree with some of the statements previously made that we do not have a infinite supply. However, we have no water infrastructure on the Boulder District, and I don't believe, maybe town council could weigh in, that we can be compelled to connect them to our water system. Where we are right now, Gordon College is supplied by the Salem Beverly Water Supply Board, not the town of Wenham. And so therefore, that's really a moot point as far as this overlay district is concerned. I also wanted to just say that I actually have experience with 3A because I'm the DPW Director in the Town of Manchester by the Sea, which also passed 3A last year, and we have had zero units developed. Manchester, which has a brand-new elementary school, by the way. So you can't really use a lot of these arguments in reality. These, I want to also thank the FinCom, the planning board, the select board for putting all the work in here. But as I've seen in Manchester, the compliance is actually a minimum threshold to be in compliance while developing the least amount of property, which is exactly what we've done here, which I'm fine with because I'm no fan of 3A. But let's not pretend that this is going to overwhelm the city's, or the town's infrastructure or anything else, because it is not. It's just a fact. I think that's all I had, but appreciate any other comments.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Going to go to the, I'm going to go to the middle microphone. Mr. Anderson's been waiting for a while.
Thank you. David Anderson, 176 Main Street. Six years ago, I attended Jackie Brezner Hand's Citizens Academy. Shortly thereafter, they compelled me to run for the planning board. I served for five years, just got re-elected. By simple math, six years means 72 missed bedtimes with my children. I have studied this issue through the Master Plan, the Master Plan Advisering Council, serving as the vice chair. I've worked with others on the Fiscal Analysis Committee. If you look at this 3A district I drafted, meaning I wrote the language to make sure that infrastructure costs cannot be transferred to the town. I have sat with the planning board. I've sat with select board members. I've sat with members of this community. There is no better district drafted possible for this town in terms of net effect on this town than what you see on that screen. And let's not be cute about it with discussions about special master. Andrea Campbell, I read the pleadings, the motions, as many of you must have as well. Eric Haskell is a very persuasive attorney. They will sue this town, and they will choose the district. They will choose a district that is not as good as the one that we have spent two years drafting to make sure that it is the least minimal negative effect on this town. They will pick the district that they want to maximize housing density in this town. So let's be very clear in this room. If you want local control, vote yes. If you want Beacon Hill and Andrea Campbell to pick the district for this town that maximizes the nightmares that many before me have spoken to, go ahead and vote no. That is what is in front of us. Let's move on from the tragedy that is 3A. Let's get with the master plan. Let's move Wenham forward. Let's have the Wenham that we want. It's not going to be as bad as the doomsayers have said. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Can I go to my microphone on my right?
Hi, also Mr. Anderson.
Oh, first name?
Matthew Anderson.
And address?
Andrea Campbell-Lav. Can we move to question, please?
All right, we've got a motion to call the question. Is there a second? It's been made and seconded. I find that we've been debating this for a sufficient amount of time for the motion to be in order. So this is a two-thirds vote. It's not debatable. We are just going to take the vote on whether it's a call to question. A motion to call the question means debate. I've got a point of order from Mr. Pascarello.
Some clarifications? I think this is a simple majority vote.
No, a motion to call the question is always two-thirds regardless of what the underlying motion is.
Sorry, I was.
No worries. That's why we've got.
There's a typo.
That's why we've got points of order. That's why we've got them. All right. So for those of you who don't know, call the question means end debate. So if you want to end debate and go to the vote on the motion, vote yes on this motion to call the question. If you want to hear more debate, I think we had one or two people lined up on the left microphone. If you want to hear more, vote no on the motion to call the question. All right, do we understand? Yes is terminate debate. No is keep debating. Voting is now open. And use your click, thank you, town council. We're going to use clickers on this, given the two-thirds. I know I can declare it, but we're going to use the clickers. So press one to end debate, two to keep debate open. All right, we're going to close the vote in 10 seconds. So if you haven't voted on the motion to call the question, now is the time to do so. Again, one, yes to terminate debate, two, no, keep debate open. And we're going to close the vote. A motion to call the question carries 386 yays, 26 nays. Debate is now closed, and we now vote on the motion under Article 13 as amended with the clarifying amendment through Mr. Pascarello. A yes vote means that the town adopts the zoning bylaw amendment with the further language through the select board's main motion and Mr. Pascarello's clarification and all the corresponding changes to the zoning map. A no vote means no change to the zoning bylaw. This motion requires a majority vote under Section 5 of Chapter 48 of the General Laws, notwithstanding what is listed in the warrant. So this is a simple majority vote. We're going to use the clickers. And again, while we're voting on this last substantive motion, as you head out, turn your clickers in. And again, while we're voting on this last substantive motion, uh, as you head out, turn your clickers in, return your voting cards. If you have one of the clickers from Monday, please bring it back to town hall, deliver it back to the town clerk. We're gonna close voting in 10 seconds. If you haven't voted but want to, now's the time. Voting is now closed. The motion carries 286 yays to 129 nays. We have now come to the end of our business for today, tonight. Please remain in your seats, I know you're not going to. I thank everyone for your patience, your participation, and for the lively yet civil debate. I really mean that. Kudos, well done on the debate on both of the contentious issues. You all deserve a round of applause, and thank you for coming back out tonight on the second night. So please return your clickers and your cards to the town clerk's staff and the election officers out front. Uh, now I'm going to recognize Ben Timman of the select board to make a motion to dissolve this special town meeting. Is there a second?
Moved.
It's been seconded. With the motion seconded, we will now take our final vote of the evening by a show of voter cards. Just a simple majority. All those in favor of dissolution?
Seated two-thirds.
Thank you. Lower, anyone opposed to dissolution? Uh, I saw one person raise their card. Motion to dissolve passes overwhelmingly. Thank you, have a good night. Town meeting is dissolved, be safe.